The mic testing, perfect. Okay, we're gonna start the meeting now, you can wrap up your conversations. Welcome to Daniel Beach, this is the City Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, just after 7pm. Meeting has begun. I would like a roll call, please.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
I'm here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thanks Laura. Everybody please bow their head for a moment of silence. Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation, special events approvals, item 3.1. This is for Principal Dr. Tracy Jackson of Collins Elementary. This is sponsored by me, so come on up doctor, give us the good word.
Good evening everyone, to our mayor, Mr. A.J. Ryan, to our vice mayor Laura Llewellyn, all of the commissioners on the bench, as well as city officials. Thank you for the opportunity to come today. I just wanted to come and share some good cheer with each and every one of you, to thank you for your support, your ongoing support of Collins Elementary School. Recently, you were at our first day of school, you were at our meet and greet, and other activities that we've had at school. You also offered $3,000 for each one of our students to receive a Collins Elementary School t-shirt. Thank you so much for that, and what we're going to do is, this year is our 65th anniversary. So the money that you have donated for those t-shirts will be a special t-shirt, commemorating the anniversary for Collins Elementary School. So we thank you so very much for everything you've done. And so tonight, I have with me a little treat just for you. I'll tell everybody in here what it is, so that there will not be any controversy about that. There is a beautiful Christmas mug that's in here for you with some cocoa, as well as some nice warm pound cake that was made today by one of our teachers, and trust me, you will enjoy it. I'd never give anybody anything I do not like or would not eat. So I have one for each and every one of you here tonight, along with Mrs. Singh, and it's my understanding that Mrs. Brown, Mr. Brown will be leaving us soon, so I have something for him as well. One of our families is here tonight, they're here actually supporting one of their children for this group. However, they have a student that goes to school at Collins Elementary School. So I'm gonna ask Gabriel Damas to come forward with me, and he's gonna help me to pass this out, and thank you so much to the Damas family for allowing him to do that tonight. So thank you all so very much. A nice little treat for you tonight after you leave your meeting. Might need, might need it during the meeting.
Well, Christmas came early, huh? Thank you, young man. Thank you Dr. Jackson, thank you. Let's give it up for Dr. Jackson and Collins Elementary. Thank you Dr. Jackson, happy holidays, and it's always great to hear about the wonderful things that you have going on at Collins Elementary. Keep up the good work. Sure, go ahead.
Yes, Principal, I would like to make a thousand dollar donation from my contingency to the elementary school. You're doing a great job, thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, keep up, keep up that energy, it's priceless. Awesome, you too.
Thank you doctor. Okay, what a good way to start the meeting, huh? Item 3.2, this is sponsored by Commissioner Joyce Davis, and it's an autism certified city presentation by Meredith Tekin. Ms. Tekin, are you in the crowd? Oh, there you are, alright. Oh, go ahead, go ahead Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly introduce Meredith and tell a little bit of the story about how this came about. Actually, several people are in the audience tonight. Emily, or Wyre, Mrs. Wirely, from the Daniel Point, introduced the Dan Marino Foundation to the manager and myself a few months ago. And while we were at the Broward League of Cities meeting, we talked about the possibility, it wasn't a full-time, it wasn't a foolproof decision yet, that the Dan Marino Foundation would be coming to the city of Daniel Beach. But as the mayor stated in his state of the city, it is now a done deal, and the Dan Marino Foundation will have its headquarters here in Daniel Beach. And so I thought about, how could we really as a city come together and champion a project that would also really show that we're walking the walk and not just having, not just talking the talk about really being an autism certified city? How can we make sure that we are really walking the walk and being true to what we say we are as far as our strategic plan is concerned, and being inclusive to each and every person that comes to the city of Daniel Beach? How can we welcome all individuals and be truly authentic and inclusive as a city? And so I reached out to Meredith at IBCCS, which is, I believe, is the International Board of Credentially and Continuing Education Services. And so, we are a pet certified city, pet, I'm tired. We are a certified city for pets, and so if we can be a certified city for pets, surely we can be a certified city for individuals with neurodivergent behaviors and autism. So with that, I want to introduce Meredith Tekin, who has been a champion for this initiative. We've been meeting over the past several months, and so with that, I would like to introduce Meredith to talk about Daniel Beach becoming an autism certified city.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Just to start off a little bit about who IBCCS is. So we have been working in this space for over 20 years, we are a credentialing body. So we focus on certification, and how can we provide knowledge and supports to professionals in a variety of settings, so that they can better serve individuals that are autistic or have other disabilities? So we have a board that guides us, clinical experts, as well as autistic self advocates, individuals with disabilities that are self advocates, that are in our programming and guide our programming. So we're really excited to talk about a specific certification we offer. We offer a variety of individual organizational and community certifications. So really quickly while we're here, and apologies for some of these formatting quirks, but really just to hone in on why to focus on this. So the community is already neurodiverse. One in six people have a sensory need or sensitivity. That includes a lot of folks that are autistic, but that also includes folks with PTSD or anxiety, sensory sensitivities, and other disabilities as well. So how can we better serve and welcome one in six people? We know that also one in 36 children are currently diagnosed with autism, that's a CDC number, but that's quite conservative. There are a lot of barriers to diagnosis, and there are millions of adults that were never diagnosed, so this is a huge need. And when it comes to certifying a city, we want to provide benefits for residents, we want to obviously have the community be known for accessibility, which we know draws businesses, draws people to move to inclusive settings, then of course, attract visitors as well. There are so many folks that for so long have been underserved. Autism specifically, in many cases, is considered an invisible disability. Folks might have other disabilities or co-occurring needs, they might need a lot of day-to-day supports, but some individuals don't need those day-to-day supports, but they still need accessible and welcoming options. So specifically, again, differentiate Daniel Beach as a tourism destination. IBCCS works all over the globe, so we know that there's a huge need for this. Travelers and families and individuals want to go to places that are inclusive, whether they have a disability themselves or not. We want to also support workforce development and business needs. We know that if you are better equipped to open up your hiring and your management to neurodivergent individuals, that's gonna benefit your business, that's going to make sure that you can acquire talent, and also retain the talent that's already working for you. Statistically, every business already has autistic and neurodivergent individuals working for them. They're probably just not being managed to their full potential, because they're afraid to say something, or the management is not equipped to help them. We want to support recreational opportunities and community access for all. So we want to make sure that staff in those settings are equipped to provide better experiences. We want to of course enhance public safety and community well-being, engagement, quality of life, and then have Daniel Beach really serve as a leader and model for other cities. Currently Mesa, Arizona is the only autism certified city in the US. We have a few other certified autism destinations here in the US, and more coming soon. There are none in Florida yet, but there are other communities working on this initiative, so. What does it take to become an autism certified city? And really, I'm before you all today, because there are some departments that might fall under the city purview that we would want to participate in the certification. But this is public and private, this is not just for the city itself to manage or be involved in. Obviously, having the support of the leaders in the community is really important to the success of the initiative. But this is really going to be something that IBCCS and other champions in the community are going to partner and work on. So it's not just up to you all in the room today, but obviously, it would be important to have your support. So these five bubbles, these five categories, we need certified organizations in each of these bubbles. So we need organizations and businesses of all sizes to do our workforce inclusion, neurodiversity certification and training. We obviously want folks in the hospitality and recreation space, hotels, lodging options, attractions, entertainment venues, restaurants. Parks and Recreation is a huge need, we work with organizations all over the country in Parks and Rec. For schools and education, that might include K through 12 or other learning institutions, and also learning centers, tutoring centers. We have programs specifically for those settings, for those educators or folks that are working directly with individuals who need those extra supports. We do also have a public safety and first responder program, so how can we help law enforcement better respond and engage with the community specific for folks that are autistic or have sensory needs? For first responders, same thing, and then on the healthcare side as well. For example, autistic individuals are eight times more likely to utilize ER and urgent care services, but less than 1% of those facilities have any kind of training specific to how to work with autistic patients. So they're there for an emergent issue, but those providers need the tools and the knowledge to make that a better experience and provide better patient care. So what that looks like for those organizations, and again, you know, Parks and Rec, first responders, public safety, those are obviously part of the city, or the county, or other institutions, but we also of course are gonna be working in the community and creating partnerships for those private organizations as well. For each of those categories, we need a certain number of businesses to complete the certification process, which includes training, at least 80% of their staff. For some of those locations, we'll also do an onsite visit, if it's an entertainment venue, attraction, or larger hotel. For Parks and Recreation, we would be looking at providing an onsite review of those key assets or resources, rec centers, highly utilized parks, and providing tools such as sensory guides for visitors to access before they come to those locations, as well as looking at processes, procedures, and accommodations that can be made at those locations, so that folks feel welcomed there. Once we have enough organizations that get certified, we can then designate Daniel Beach as an autism certified city. So we're building momentum and kind of snowballing those number of certified locations. Some of our partners we already work with, for example, in other communities, Boeing, SeaWorld, Six Flags, Universal. We work with many hospital systems, from phlebotomy departments to pediatric outpatient clinics, to therapy clinics, to emergency rooms and urgent care centers as well. Large school districts, obviously lots of first responders and public safety and law enforcement officers as well. So as far as the next steps, and I'm happy to take questions, but- to take questions, but the idea is this is the beginning of a journey of connecting with other organizations in Dania Beach. Having an organization like the Dan Marino Foundation here that can help on the workforce side and provide other supports locally is fantastic. IBCCS would be also looking to connect with organizations in each of those five categories. So we would work on creating an educational outreach plan, you know, setting up meetings, making connections, doing informational sessions about the certification process and what it means. We would also be signing those partners on, doing the training, do the onsite visits, and then eventually do the certification announcements. For most communities we're working with, it's about a 12 to 14-month process to get certified as a community. Each organization can be certified typically within 30 to 60 days. Because we are the sole source for these programs, these are certifications that you have to meet certain standards for. We do require that they renew every two years. So just like any good professional certification, you have to do ongoing learning. We provide ongoing support, training, learning resources, advice and consultation, all as part of the certification process. So this isn't something that just says, "Yeah, we're friendly. Let's just put a sticker on the door." This is really something that is supposed to be meaningful and comprehensive and something that can carry on throughout the community for a very long time. Creating additional opportunities for partnerships and synergy within the community, you know, above and beyond what IBCCS provides. So obviously, we're the mechanism. We have the certification process. But this is something that really is obviously going to come from the community and come from those partners and then live on and be a living, breathing part of the community. So that's the overview of the process. Again, for most organizations, they're going to pay for their own certification. We provide a lot of support as far as the training and certification process, the announcement process. Part of opening up accessibility for folks is letting them know specifically that you want them to be there. Unfortunately, a lot of folks in the past have faced stigma. They've had negative experiences. They're not sure where to go or what to do. So part of this process is also rolling out that welcome mat for folks and saying, "Hey, we've done a little bit of extra work in this area and we want you to know that we want you to be here with us." So whether that's medical or recreational or any type of venue, that's really critical to roll out that welcome mat. And that's it for my presentation. I'm happy to take questions if anybody has them.
Meredith, if you could, I don't know if it sunk in, but just the fact of how each entity, each one of the five different pillars that you would be seeking to certify, how that process goes as far as each entity becomes a certified autism center. There's a big, huge, you know, celebration for each individual pillar and then that becoming part of, you know, a continuation process until all five pillars are certified and then the city is certified as a community.
Yes, exactly. So IBCCS works with each organization, whether, again, it's public safety or, let's say for Parks and Rec, for example. So we would engage with Parks and Rec, work with them on rolling out the training program. We have different levels of training depending on the person's role or interaction with individuals. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of program. So specific for a recreation setting, if there's an individual that is running a summer camp or they're responsible for individuals for multiple hours in a day, that's going to be a longer training program that gives them more tools versus somebody that is checking people in at a front desk, right? So we have a couple of different processes there. Our training is meant to be delivered online, video-based. We have translation opportunities and things like that, study guides. But everybody goes through that training process. We have to have at least 80% or more of the public-facing staff go through some level of training, again, depending on their role. And then for Parks and Rec, for example, we would also do an onsite visit. So like I mentioned, create those sensory guides for any interactive spaces that we review, create process review recommendations, basically create a roadmap for additional accessible options and process improvements that can be made. We're not coming into a location and making a bunch of physical, you know, build a room or, you know, paint this wall. We're really looking at how can you be flexible? Because within autism, there's a huge spectrum of needs, challenges, strengths, and interests. So we want to provide ways that organizations and locations can be flexible as much as possible. And then when folks show up, they have trained staff that they're, you know, comfortable interacting with. And then we certify that organization. We do an announcement. So we want everybody to know, like I mentioned, hey, this organization has met the certification requirements. They've done this work. And we put it out on our, you know, channels and our network. We, like I said, have a large network across the country, but also we want to give that organization the opportunity to talk about all the other programs that they offer that might be accessible, to weave that into the DNA of what they're already doing, and then get their time in the sunshine. Like I said, let folks know that, hey, this location is really working to make sure that you feel welcome here. And then we provide that ongoing support for the lifetime of the credential. So typically, that's two years. And like I said, additional learning opportunities, check-ins, advice, tip sheets, employee guides, anything that that organization needs related to accessibility for autism and sensory needs, we're there for. So the idea is, over this 12 to 14-month journey for the city, we're announcing organizations as they get certified. So there's an intrinsic value for that organization, not only to better serve whatever, you know, patient or community member or individual they're trying to serve, maybe even internally as well, their own employees. But we always hear feedback that organizations, of course, get a lot of positive attention for doing things like that. They see their employee morale and engagement go up. People want to work places that are inclusive and they probably will see themselves or somebody that they know in that content, in that training. And then we know also that, again, bringing folks to the community. We have one of our partners in North Carolina that became a certified autism destination, so they were focusing solely on the tourism aspect. Within three months of being a certified destination, they actually had somebody call and say that they moved their business to their city over another city that was an hour away because they were autism-certified. They also had somebody else say that they moved their family there, that they were considering moving to a city about 45 minutes east of that town, and they chose to move their family to the certified destination because they wanted to live somewhere that had options for them. So we, again, we want to build that momentum and celebrate those individual organizations and then obviously with the bigger goal of certifying the city.
What city in Arizona?
It's Mesa, Arizona.
Mesa, Arizona.
And the community I'm mentioning in North Carolina is High Point, North Carolina, and then the furniture capital of the world. And then Visalia, California, is also a certified destination.
So this is a brand-new initiative, obviously.
So Mesa has been certified since 2019. So we've actually been offering this for quite some time. But the end of 2019 was a great time to announce, you know, this amazing initiative and then 2020 hit. So we have probably a couple of dozen communities across the US and actually internationally working on initiatives like this in varying phases of completion. But those are the three that have completed it and announced it.
And it takes like 60 days, you said?
So for each organization, so each business to get certified, 30 to 60 days is a typical timeframe. For the whole city or community to be certified, in my experience, it's usually about 12 to 14 months. But it just depends on how fast you can get those buckets filled, basically, right? The five buckets: healthcare, education, public safety, workplace, and recreation.
And what's the cost?
So it varies by organization. So it's going to depend on the number of staff and the type of, you know, industry, right? So for example, our law enforcement training, that's about a two-credit-hour program. So it takes about an hour, hour and a half to complete. That's going to be less intensive and a different price than somebody that is, you know, an educator in a classroom that takes a longer program. So to give you a range, though, an idea of pricing, a smaller organization, maybe a small business that has 25 employees that wants to do the workplace neurodiversity and inclusion certification, for the certification and training, that would probably be about $3,000 for the two years. It's good for two years. For a larger organization that has 250 staff and we need to do an onsite visit, that might be $10,000.
Yeah, that's about us. We're like 250, 300. Just over 300, right?
Yeah. And we have certified some city entities, if you wanted to go that route, as far as every, you know, public-facing department within the city. But we usually look at it at a department basis or, again, on a business basis.
Okay.
Your mic's not on.
Go ahead.
I think this is definitely something that we should explore. I love the initiative. I mean, we'll have to sit down and see the financials of everything and see if we could sell this to other organizations. But I think this is a win for the city. So I would like to continue exploring this. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, no, great. Thank you for your presentation. It's great. The fact that we have a Dan Marino organization coming here as well, it only makes sense. And for us to, you know, probably be the leaders in the county on this, or in the state of Florida, actually, because you don't even have one city in the state of Florida.
Not yet.
It's not only an opportunity, but it's an honor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thanks, Meredith. And thank you, Commissioner Davis, for bringing her in for that. All right, next item, 3.3. We have an American Legion Post 304 update from our commander over there, Gunny Savage. Come on up, Gunny.
Mayor, Council, you folks have been a huge supporter of Commander Anderson's post and my post. And for Veterans Day, you've done something that was huge. And I don't know if you know it or not, how huge it is, but it's a big deal. And we're on the national map now of becoming a Purple Heart City. And some of my staff and I, we decided we want to give back a little bit to you. So you said, "Mayor, that's a great idea." Well, here we are.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Let's get a picture. Thank you. Keep it up. Someone's taking a picture, just like this.
I have purple on, what do you know?
I know.
How'd that work out? I didn't even know. It's always Marco. It's always Marco's fault.
I love the selfie. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Smile. One, two, three. All right.
Jessica's trying to take a picture?
Yes.
Thank you.
And a plaque.
Thank you. Candido, he's in the back somewhere. Candido, front and center.
Yep.
Candido is our newest member of the American Legion Post 304. Now you've got two Marines in the house. He's official mayor.
Where's the door card? Where's the door card?
You gotta come get it.
You gotta go get the door card, Candido. Candido's our resident Marine, our deputy manager. Yeah, that is a big deal. And it's very special that our city is now official Purple Heart City. And with both posts, it's wonderful what we've accomplished together as a city. And that was our update from Post 304. I want to give an update from Post 209 as well. Earlier this year, we put our contingency funds together to sponsor three young men to go to Boy State. So I'll give you guys a little prelude of what Boy State is. Boy State is sponsored by the Florida American Legion, all the American Legion posts. So what these posts do is they go out and they find highly accomplished high school students. And you have to be a junior in high school getting ready to enter your senior year. They have a girl state as well that we're working with the Legion to take initiative on as well to send some girls up Tallahassee. So you go to Tallahassee, you take a bus up Tallahassee, and for a week, you experience a mock government. So you start as a city, a municipal government, and you run for city positions. You know, you could be a clerk, you could be a commissioner, sheriff, and then you go to the county position where you could be clerk of courts, yeah, clerk of courts, or, you know, property appraiser. And then you go all the way up to a state level where you could run for senator, state legislature, and even governor. They say if you make governor in Boy State, your life's made forever. So me and Commander Anderson went to, you know, Dania doesn't have any high schools. We went to Hollywood Hills High School and we reached out to them to present to us individual candidates who qualify and who also are interested in a future life of politics or, you know, just to learn how it works. And I myself attended Boy State when I was in high school. My family attended it. And it was very impactful on my life. And I know that the program, you know, COVID and everything, it died for a little, and we brought it back. And without the support of the staff and the commission, this wouldn't have been possible. So I want to invite the two young men, well, three young men. Elijah, you're here, right, Elijah? Oh, no. Okay. Elijah's here. He couldn't make it. But we have Samuel Venkin and John Sararo. John Sararo. So they're going to come up and just give us a brief description of what they experienced. So we'll start with John first. Go ahead, John.
Hi, my name is John Sarao and I'm a 2023 Boy State delegate. A little background information about me, I attend Hollywood Hills High School. At that time, I was a junior. And I'm also an Eagle Scout. In my family, I'm one of seven siblings. This opportunity really came out of the blue for me. I didn't really know anything about Boy State, neither did Sam. My vice principal came up to me one day. She was like, "You think you'd be interested?" I was like, "Yeah, sure." I didn't know what it was. I didn't know when it was. I said, "I would do it." Next came the interview process. I didn't know there was an interview, but there was. Major Anderson and Mayor Ryan, they interviewed us. There were some really hard and comprehensive questions that we had to answer. And they would pick two candidates to go, well, three. Elijah Joseph Lewis, he's not here today, but yeah. So then after that, they gave us a couple packets, a lot of paperwork to do, which I turned in successfully. And then, yeah, we got to go on a trip. The first night was the drive-up, which was, it was a nightmare. We left at 10:00 PM and it was like 30 degrees on the bus. I didn't have any sweatpants. I didn't have a hoodie. So I was curled up in the fetal position on the bus, just shivering, which wasn't really nice. Then the best part of that was we went to IHOP at 5:00 in the morning. And we finally got there. The first thing they told us when we got there was we had to write a speech about what it means to be constitutional and what the Constitution is. So that was already tough. I took a quick one-hour power nap before the session started and then the Boy State began. So the first day, it was the city level. So we got to run for city positions such as mayor, city clerk, like the mayor said. I wasn't really feeling it that day. I had a migraine. I still ran for something, but my head was killing me from the drive-up. So I didn't win any positions. I wish I did a little bit more on the first day, but I wasn't able to. The second day, I was a little bit more into it. It was a county. I ran for two positions and I got the county clerk, which is a pretty big achievement. And it allowed me to be in the county meetings at night where we went over county simulations and they would give us an issue in the county, on the county level, and we would have to solve it, whether it's budgeting or transportation. And then on the third day, it was the parties. When we got to Boy State, they split us into two parties, the nationalists and the federalists. It's supposed to simulate the political parties in our system. And the goal of the parties was to help elect candidates. It's supposed to simulate the political parties in our system, and the goal of the parties was to help elect candidates from our parties to state official positions such as governor. So when we got to our party meeting, one of the best positions there was a party whip. They're supposed to help plan and motivate and help get the party in the position that they want to be. I ran for that, but unfortunately I lost. But you know what? It is what it is. It happened. Um and then even though I lost, I got the opportunity to run for state senator, which I did get. After that, they announced who the governor was. They had a big celebration for that. In the final two days with the climax of the whole event, we got to do a mock legislative procedure, which is really cool. Every boy before they came got to make a bill. I made my bill on um uh having a little brain fart, gerrymandering, yeah. Gerrymandering, which if you don't know, is um when you change your district to help give you an advantage when voting. So I wrote my bill about that. Unfortunately, my bill didn't get touched on during the hearings, but there were several bills that we did get a touch on. It was really cool. We got to amend the bills. We got a vote. There was a lot of um a lot of debating, which was really cool. And then the drive back, it wasn't as it wasn't as bad as the drive there, but it was still tough. And um after that, I'm gonna pass it to Sam.
All right, thank you, John. Or should I say Senator?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, and fellow citizens. My name is Sam Beckman, and I'm just gonna touch upon what John has said. So I'm just gonna give you like a little bit of my experience and my um my thank yous to the city of Dana Beach. So I stand before you today with the man's gratitude in my heart, reflecting on an experience that has truly shaped my perspective on our government system. The opportunity to participate in the Florida Boy State was completely transformative, and it opened my eyes and showed me a whole different perspective of not only the mechanics of our government, but more importantly, the true essence of civic duty, responsibility, and the brotherhood within uh our city. So the American Legion and the city of Dana Beach have provided me with an invaluable opportunity, which was so amazing. Like John said, maybe the ride there wasn't wasn't the greatest, but it was definitely really cool just to bond with other people throughout the whole uh state of Florida and just see all the different perspectives that come together and see how much bigger the state of Florida is beyond Broward and the city of Dana Beach. So a short story of my experience has been when I didn't really expect to put myself out there, and I was just being laid back over there, and I didn't really see myself doing too much. But then the second day hit, and I'm like, all right, I'm already up here in Tallahassee, eleven hours from home. I'm like, I gotta do something. So um yeah, I stepped out of my comfort zone, and the whole thing was just amazing. And the long hours paid off because I ended up getting a city position. I was a county commissioner, and I ended up getting a House Representative. So it was really cool to sit in the the Capitol office of the of the state of Florida. It was just amazing to see all that, and um this experience has opened my eyes to the significance of community involvement and the responsibilities we bear we bear as American citizens. To the American Legion and city of Dana Beach, I extend my deepest thanks for investing in the education of future leaders. Your commitment to fostering civic awareness has left an indelible mark on not only me, John Sorale, but all the other people that went to Boy State. So I'm just really grateful for that opportunity, and yeah, it's definitely sticks with me and just opened my eyes, made me a better leader and citizen in my community, make me more curious to learn more. So thank you.
Thank you, young man. A- as you all as you all can hear, it this is uh it's it's transformative, like you said. And it's amazing how they had no clue about government or anything. You know, when we first talked to them, first interviewed them, they they weren't even sure the program. And you just heard their firsthand accounts, ladies and gentlemen, and uh this program's been around for a while, and I'm really happy that uh our 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 posts were able to assist the community, and we look forward to doing it in the future also. And there's a girl state out there, too, okay? There's girl state and boy state, and we're definitely gonna uh propel that into the future. So be sure to spread the word over at Hollywood Hills, and uh congratulations. I I too was a senator at Boy State. That was the eyes I got, and it uh it 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 sticks with you. That's for that's for sure. So uh thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Commander Anderson, too. You you want to speak, Commander Anderson? Sure, sure.
On behalf of post two oh nine, I want to thank you all for supporting two fine gentlemen who worked with Hollywood Hills High School. I too was a Boy Stater. I went in nineteen seventy-one.
Wow.
That's one of the reasons why I'm so engaged with activities, especially with the armed forces. I went in seventy-four, served six years. I served three years at Fort Ordin, California, and three years in Frankfurt, Germany. And I really appreciate how the city is stepping up. I appreciate the funding that you have for us, regards helping us restore our posts, and we just got to get the word out that the American Legion is is a good organization to be a part of, as well as the VFW. Too many times, veterans don't 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 feel as though they're respected or honored, but hopefully Dana Beach can step up and show them that we do matter. Regards to the Purple Heart and everything, you know, one of our, Donnie Parker, he lost his life as a as a pilot in the Korean War. That's why Donnie Parker is the name of our post itself, that I'm the commander. Hopefully, next year, we're gonna have a new commander, uh Ms. Ivy Q, because after so many years, I've gotten tired. So I'm looking forward to working with her and looking forward to working with the uh city, and hopefully we can keep this program going in Hollywood Hills as well as three oh four could step up with South Broward to maybe and get the girl state as well, because it's a phenomenal experience, and I'm glad that the city and the mayor, we pushed it to make it happen. I appreciate all you all voting with the confidence, and you see the results, and it's gonna have an impact on your life tremendously. Thanks again.
Thank you, Commander. All right, come up come up quick for a picture, guys. Stay in the front.
That's pretty amazing. These kids. Isn't that awesome? Yeah, yeah. Isn't that awesome? That's awesome. Right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're they're ready for the next step in their lives. They mature very quickly like that.
One, two, three. Smile. One, two, three.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, thank you. All right, thanks, guys. You made my night. Um all right, now for item three point four, we have some more recognition, and this is recognition to Commissioner Salvino for sponsoring the employee picnic, and this is a human resources item. Anybody from H R wanna? Oh, Linda's coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, and all the great residents of the city of Dana Beach. I'm here with our H R director and behind me are the department directors. Um I wanted to take this opportunity uh to thank Commissioner Salvino. Um two years ago, he came to me and to Candido and to our H R director, and he said, I want to do something for our city team. Our our city team is running on all cylinders. Um they're making us look good. Um they're working twenty-four seven to ensure that we bring um the best services that any city can have. And um he said, I want to be the sponsor, and I want to work with you all and bring an event to extend my gratitude to the city team. So this was our second annual um city picnic to honor um our our employees that every day come with such love and such enthusiasm for the city. And we didn't know what to get you, because you never won anything, and you have everything. But Linda and I said, well, th- there was so much time that went into this. Um so we wanted to give you a token of our appreciation from all the employees of this city for all the time that you take. Um not just planning, but when you call us, and not only to take care of something for our residents, but to always thank us from the bottom of your your heart with such genuineness and such love and and such respect. So if you could just join us, we would like to present you this clock. So. Linda, I know you work very closely. This is on behalf of of all our employees with much love and and much gratitude, and it and it works on a on a battery. Included battery. We included the battery.
Thank you, Manager, Linda, and all the staff. I appreciate everything you guys do for the city of Dana Beach. Uh the residents may not see it all, but I do, and I see how hard you work. I see how dedicated you are to this place. Um under our management team and directors, your city's never been in better shape, and I can tell you that they work twenty-four seven. When I mean that is when we have our floods, and you may not always believe it, but they're out there fighting it. And um it just, you know, as a business owner, I know that recognizing your employees, what they do for you and how hard they work, means a lot to them. And that's why I feel that the employee picnic is something that we can recognize them for. There's an awful lot of uh thankful people out there that brought many, many donations where they end up with uh, you know, rooms, hotels, there was gift prizes, TV sets, electronics, all donated by people that care about our city employees, and I'm sure that every one of them that won something was very happy. All I can tell you is that I'm I feel really good about being here in Dana Beach. Thank you to all of you.
He said he lost sixty pounds this year. Congratulations, Commissioner Salvino. Uh way to recognize uh those who deserve to be recognized. Okay, and up next, we have Parks and Recreation uh item, and this is a teen summer camp video. So what do you got for us, Cassie?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Cassie Warren, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. We are just here to say thank you to the city commission. Um this summer, right before the summer, you all gave us contingency funds to help our teen summer camp program and allow for this program to be a free program. Uh we ran it for three weeks. They it is for grades eight through twelfth grade. Um they got to do things such as iFly, paintballing, Dave and Buster's, water parks. They did a community engagement, street cleanup. Um they learned leadership skills. They met new friends, and a majority of these teens have now joined our Youth Advisory Council. Um so tonight, we have tonight, we have a video that we want to show you that shows all the fun and exciting things that they did. But before we do that, I am going to invite Elijah up here, who is our Vice President of our Youth Advisory Council, just to say thank you to you all for what you have done and helped sponsor.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Davis. Um I'm Vice President of the Youth Advisory Council, and I've been attending the Teen Summer Camp since twenty twenty-two. I'd like to come up here and give you my thanks on behalf of the Teen Summer Camp. I've learned so much from participating in the program. These past summers, I was able to make new friends, visit new places, and try different things and so much more. Because of your donation, it opened up a lot of opportunities for me and my friends, and it created a lot of experiences that I'm grateful for and that I will never forget. So thank you once again, and have a good night.
Thank you, Elijah. We have a video as well.
So my favorite part of the um summer camp was actually the field trips, because like we get to go somewhere fun and have like like the best time of our lives.
My favorite field trip was iFly because it was like
So my favorite part of the um summer camp was actually the field trips, because like we get to go somewhere fun and have like like the best time of our lives.
My favorite field trip was iFly because it was like
Excuse us, we had some technical difficulties.
I'm definitely coming back next summer, and I can't wait to begin.
Basically, I got to face my fear there, because I was originally afraid heights. My friends encouraged me to go on there. After I went down, I felt good, and so I just went on some more.
My favorite part was probably baking in the kitchen. You know, we made like donuts and cakes and um even like tacos and stuff like that, and I enjoyed that a lot. I definitely want to come here next summer. If not, if I'm not attending, then I would definitely want to be working here or volunteering here.
So my favorite part of the um summer camp was actually the field trips, because like we get to go somewhere fun and have like like the best time of our lives.
My favorite field trip was iFly because it was like very exhilarating.
I'm definitely coming back next summer, and I can't wait to begin.
Basically, I got to face my fear there, because I was originally afraid heights. My friends encouraged me to go on there. After I went down, I felt good, and so I just went on some more.
My favorite part was probably baking in the kitchen.
Yeah, it looks like a nice video.
You know, we made like donuts and cakes and
And then we come back to it.
Um even like tacos and stuff like that, and I enjoyed that a lot. I definitely want to come here next summer. If not, if I'm not attending, then I would definitely want to be working here or volunteering here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, while while we're waiting, um we have items uh seven, eight, nine, and ten that are all seeking your approval for special events. They've all gone through all, and eleven, I'm sorry. They, eight, nine, ten, eleven. They've all gone through every single department. Um they've gone over everything with
So my favorite part of the um summer camp was actually the field trips.
These are really viable and really good events that have checked every box, and we ask for for your support.
Like we get to go somewhere fun and have like like the best time of our lives.
Uh yeah, over here, well, yeah, so we have a special event.
Very exhilarating.
I'm definitely coming back next summer, and I can't wait to begin.
Basically, I got to face my fear there, because I was originally afraid heights. My friends encouraged me to go on there. After I went down, I felt good, and so I just went on some more.
My favorite part was probably baking in the kitchen. You know, we made like donuts and cakes and um even like tacos and stuff like that, and I enjoyed that a lot. I definitely want to come here next summer. If not, if I'm not attending, then I would definitely want to be working here or volunteering here.
Oh, uh Emily, did you want to say something? Yeah, yeah, just give us a brief description of what you have uh at Dana Point. Emily is a representative of Dana Point, and they do a wonderful job.
Um so in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna do a lot of the events. Just going to be a little more, I don't know, a little bit less, but it is today. All of our events are inclusive to the community. We welcome people from all walks of life, and we really just want to continue to build special
When you write, your tone influences how readers respond. With Grammarly, just highlight your text and type how you want to sound. We'll have Night Market Fridays. Get your message right every time. Download it for free at Grammarly dot com.
We'll have live music on Saturdays and Family Sundays with music and games for the kids every Sunday. And then our special event programming with St. Putnam Island, Bar Fiesta on May fifth, and then we'll have the Food and Wine Festival on um I think it'll be in November, the first weekend of November, and then the partnership with the city of Dana Beach, the five K one record.
Right, and and right now, you guys have snow, right?
Yes, we have snow right now.
On the weekend, right? With Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Awesome, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, so we'll be continuing with that program next holiday season as well. So we'll do snowfall on the lawn, the snowman on the lawn, and then the holiday market. Yeah, so we'll be continuing with that program next holiday season as well. So we'll do snowfall on the lawn, the snowman on the lawn, and then the holiday markets.
All right. All right, thank you, Emily. Appreciate you, and appreciate what Dana Point has done and brought to the community. All right, Ralph, this is working or no? Okay, all right, let we'll go to the update on the Nyberg Swanson renovation. This is Public Services.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Fernando Rodriguez, Public Services Director. I'll try to make it brief. This is the Nyberg Swanson House. As many of you know, it's one of our oldest structures in the city, in a 1913 vintage two-story house, about 2,600 square feet. And this project, we're really excited to finally really get to to close to the beginning of it. It is, I want to just go over some of the work that's going to be done. It is a historic restoration, but also a lot of practical important things will be done to the building improvements. So as far as historically speaking, we want to preserve that 1913 feel and look by doing the wood staining, the cabinets, the flooring, all to the authentic look of the 20th, early 20th century, 1913. However, also, this building will get a new AC system, a refurbished plumbing, an electrical system, as well as a new metal shingle roof, which is the original roofing type that the building had. We're also going to renovate, to historically renovate the second floor porch, which is a very historic porch in the house. Where we are as far as the project, which I'm sure you most of you are interested in hearing, actually, tomorrow is going to be the pre-bid meeting at 10:00 in the morning at the house, at the Nyberg Swanson House. The bid opening is going to happen Monday, the 8th of January, and the restoration will take about six months, roughly 180 days. And we are hoping to get started in early April with the aim of having it finished sometime in September, October for a ribbon cutting, grand opening. So we're very excited about getting it started. And that's my that's my update.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your work. Thanks for the update. Looking forward to finally getting the Nyberg Swanson House renovated. We did, you know, I think it was in the early 90s, the city moved the Nyberg Swanson House, and it's very important to our city, and it's it's nice for our little historical park that we have, so definitely looking forward to that. I'm sure the whole entire community is ready for it as well. Oh, okay. Hey, Youth Advisory Council. Youth Advisory Council, you guys come down here, we'll take a picture before you guys go.
Cassie, bring him down. So can I just want to say something real quick about the the kids here for the teen program? I went to the I went to their last day at their last at CW Thomas Park when they were coming back from their field trip that day. And all of these kids really enjoyed the program, and they got a lot out of it, and they they made friends, they learned some things, and a lot of them actually continued participating with the city afterwards, doing volunteer work, helping with the younger children in the summer camps, doing lots of things like that, not just Youth Advisory Council. So it's definitely a really good program. It's a free program. It's just the 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 field trips are what cost the money. So it's a great program. So if you know any teenagers out there that need something to do, send them that way because it's really excellent programs. And anyway, so I just wanted to say what it was. It was a pleasure meeting them all when I went over there, and they did a great job. And thanks to the the counselors who helped out as well. They did. They did a tremendous job with these kids. So thanks.
Yes, hats off to you guys. Hats off. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, we don't have any we have no proclamation, so we're going to bump it up to our administrative reports, and we're going to start with Madam Manager Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been monitoring the weather for the next couple of days, and we anticipate heavy rains from Wednesday through Sunday. As you know, this past November 15th, we were really hit with some heavy rains. Our Deputy City Manager Candido Sosa and our Director of Public Services, our Deputy Director, hit the ground running. We just want you to know that we've taken all proactive efforts in anticipation of of this rain that we're that we see in the radar. All the drains have been cleared, all the trucks, all the equipments, the the vac trucks, the pumps, everything is ready to go. So so just know that we know that the rains are coming, and we do anticipate some flooding, but we have all teams ready to go. We we also want to let you know that you've you've been seeing a lot of festive activities and a lot of lights in our city. And I gotta I gotta thank this the City Commission for the support on on our budget. Whether you're walking at City Hall or one of our parks, or where you're driving down one of our major corridors on on Griffin Boulevard, you you will see that that Dana Beach is moving forward in regards to the city that we are and the city that we want to be for our residents and those that visit our city. We invite you to join us for all the upcoming Dana After Dark. The Dana After Dark events have been fantastic. We just had a fantastic November, the 30th, we did our tree lighting ceremony. And the Parks and Recreation Department is doing a remarkable, a remarkable job. And we wanted to let you know that on January 13th, we have the Dana After Dark Art Festival. On February the 10th, we have the Dana After Dark Dinner at the Hall for Valentine's. On March the 9th, we have the Dana After Dark Wine and Seafood Festival. On April the 13th, we have the Dana After Dark Blues and Barbecue Festival. And on May 11th, we have the Dana After Dark Taste of Dana Beach. Follow us on social media. But for those of you that are not in social media, we have a very interactive webpage so you could get all your information. But it's a really great way to spend your Saturdays with the city and with your neighbors. And we just keep augmenting and enhancing these programs for our community. We also wanted to let you know that the electric vehicle charging stations at City Hall were completed on November the 8th. I want to thank Commissioner Davis and Commissioner James. I know that we have been working on this. And Commissioner James is someone that that I met with on this initiative, and she took the lead role. And now we have really charging stations that we're extremely proud of and for everyone to use when they're visiting City Hall. The the city's code compliance team is expecting all businesses in the city for business tax receipts, BTRs. And we're educating our local businesses on how to apply for the BTRs if they need any type of assistance, which is one of the directives that we received from our City Commission. Our historic Nyberg Swanson, as Director Fernando says, is something that we're very proud of. We embrace the new, but we're also investing in in the historical facilities and beautiful buildings that we have in our city as well. So we look forward to celebrating the city's 120th anniversary next year. And we look forward to doing the ribbon cutting of that beautiful, beautiful facility, the Nyberg Swanson House. And this concludes my report. I want to wish everybody a happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, a happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas. We really have a remarkable team, and our goal is to bring you the best services, and it's an honor for me to serve as your City Manager. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Madam Manager. Sure, Commissioner James?
Yes, what exactly did they do for the electric parking? And how are we going to manage it? Because it's filled with cars now that are not necessarily electric.
The the giant step that we took forward, which was the first step, is the procurement department published a request for proposals to upgrade the city's EV charging station. So what what you see there now is going to be totally revamped. So the city parking garage will have faster parking. Parking faster.
Charging.
Charging. And that's something that we discussed. I mean, it would take forever. But now with this procurement that went out November the 8th, our goal is to improve that service for our residents and those that come and visit our city so they could just plug up. And it'll be night and day in regards to what we have now and what we expect to have very soon.
Is there a timeline on it?
The timeline for the RFP is usually somewhere between 45 and and 60 days. Turnkey from the time we put it out to by the time that we close the proposals. And then the proposals are presented, and then we come back to you with a recommendation for our company. So we're probably looking at March or April to come back to you for our recommendation for the vendor that's going to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
No, my pleasure.
Okay, thank you, Manager. This is an administrative report from our city attorney. Please, anything?
One thing I we it was raised during the CRA meeting as well. Basically, we'd like to hold, I guess, a workshop between the CRA and the City Commission, City Commission, City Manager, Parks Department to go over the patch, the what we'd like to do with it, et cetera. So the clerk will be contacting everyone to coordinate a meeting in the new year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Laura?
Well, this is your last meeting for December, so happy holidays. But we will start back up in January on the 9th with your CRA board meeting at 5:30 and your City Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. And then you have your January 23rd Commission Workshop on Social Media, and that's at 5:00 PM. And then you have your 7:00 PM.
Just Mayor, if I could, please. One last thing. I sent an email yesterday to the commission to seek direction that at our second meeting in February, which I believe is February 24th, if you'd like, before the 7 o'clock meeting, perhaps starting at 6:30 or 5, 6:00 or 5:30, a workshop should be presented by Robert Myers on Form 6, the new financial disclosure forms, on how to do it because it's electronic. They're expecting a lot of problems with it, a lot of concerns over it. So would you like to have the workshop with Robert Myers to go over the process for the Form 6 and the requirements?
Yeah, could we do it at 6 o'clock?
Whatever you'd like. I just want to make sure you want.
How long you think it'll take?
I think it's an hour.
An hour?
Person for that, just when we need to fill it out, can we get someone to help us? This is a very comprehensive form that I know that we're I mean, you you really almost need a CPA for this kind of a thing. So I'm just wondering if we could have somebody dedicated for our city or for our commission or somebody to work with to to do this so that we make sure that we dot all our i's and cross all our t's. I don't want to make a mistake with this form. So I I'm just looking for help. I don't know that a workshop is going to do it.
I can talk to the manager and see about that. I don't know. Everybody's doing workshops.
I don't know. I I just know that.
Can we have?
I think it'll be beneficial for us to attend that.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm all good for more information. I don't know whether it's possible or not, but I do need more information. The league was going to give more information, but I just think that we need to have some more expertise with regard to this form because it's a lot of intricacies involved in it that that have never been.
It's an electronic form as well, which is the first time for the entire city to or anyone in the state to really have to do it electronically. If you if you're comfortable with the 24th, I can set that up at least for a preliminary workshop, and I could talk about with the manager about getting you expertise at the time of filing, which is at the end of June.
I think between the.
Just a recommendation, somebody.
You know what? I think between the Robert Myers workshop and and the league is also doing a workshop. And I think that's important to make sure that we get it right. So I think investing that time is beneficial to you all. So between, you know, Robert Myers coming and I think the league workshop, I think back to those two would be very, very, you know, informative.
Okay. Just to clarify, that's the 27th, not the 24th. Thank you. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure if it's on the record, so it's clear. The 27th. I apologize for the date.
Just want to give you one quick update. You know, I just I just got a text from Frank. We are working on an RFP for the audio here at at City Hall. Wanted to bring that up.
So I can work with you all on the second meeting for February and a time. I think we all said 6:00 PM, but
Tentatively.
We'll nail it down, and we'll be in touch with you once it's confirmed.
Okay. Now for public safety reports, we're going to start with Captain Jason Turala.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager is not here right now. So our CST team again conducted a high-risk search warrant again over the last couple of weeks. So our CST team received complaints and tips of information through a documented confidential informant that there was narcotics sales occurring at one of our residents on the east side of the city. They began doing controlled purchases for crack cocaine, which led to a search warrant being signed by a judge. We conducted a search warrant of the residence, and we yielded over nine grams of MDMA, crack cocaine, three firearms, and one which had been reported stolen out of Palm Beach County. Suspect one is a Tem Time convicted felon who is out currently out on bond for possession of a firearm by a convicted felon. He has been charged by possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, grand theft of a firearm, possession of cocaine with intent to sell, possession of MDA with intent to sell, possession of methamphetamine with intent to sell, and possession of marijuana with intent to sell. We have asked the feds to look into that case, too, reference the stolen weapon out of Palm Beach County. So we're hoping that the feds might take that one on. Obviously, the federal system seems to be a lot more strict with the firearm charges. So we're waiting for the feds to see if they'll pick up that case against him. The suspect two in that residence was also charged with possession of a firearm by a convicted felon and as well as possession of methamphetamine with intent to distribute. Earlier this week, we had a very important call that came out that could have had tragic consequences. So our deputies received a call from the ATF as well the Secret Service that they were conducting a federal firearms investigation into one of our residents. The system this time worked, which it doesn't always work, but it alerted, and they immediately contacted Broward Sheriff's Office because it is our jurisdiction. We contacted our Threat Management Unit. We responded over to the residence, and we discovered that this gentleman had just purchased 23 firearms, rifles, along with armored ballistic vests, hundreds of rounds of ammunition. The subject was completely incoherent, and he stated that he bought the weapons to protect the president on January 16th, and he was planning on going to pin medals on the president's chest as soon as he could. And once we made entrance entry into the residence with our RPO, the house was completely disheveled. He was incoherent. He was baker-acted for his own safety. We were able to recover all 23 of the firearms and the rifles, as well as the ballistic vests, and as well as all the ammunition. We were able to take custody of all that, and it is now just awaiting the final approval from the judge for permanent confiscation. So that obviously could have had really bad consequences whether that that system did not work the way it was supposed to with the RPO and everything working the way it did. So that was a fantastic job. We also had a stabbing that occurred off of 245 Southwest 4th Street. The victim called 911 advising he was stabbed by his roommate. The victim sustained lacerations to his forearm, and he was transported to Broward General Hospital where he was recovering from his injuries. On scene, we were able to take the suspect into custody. We obtained a search warrant for the suspect's room, and once we got inside the room, we were able to locate the weapon, and the suspect was placed into custody for aggravated battery with a tentacle. Our motor deputies are continuing their vehicle enforcement off of Southeast 5th Avenue. Residents continue to complain about the traffic, even though we know the study showed it wasn't there. They're still voicing their concern, so we still put our motor deputy over there. We're continuing with our traffic enforcement over there. All of our speed trailers have been recharged for the holiday season, and as well as we conducted all the maintenance on all of our LPR trailers. So as of today, all of our speed trailers in LPR trailers are out throughout the city for the holiday season. Tomorrow, we have Coco with the Cop. That's going to be taking place at Collins Elementary. It's a program that helps our. It's a program that helps our children, grades two through five, uh, to gain relationships and feel comfortable with our deputies and our law enforcement, um, and to build trust with us. So that's a really nice event that's taking place tomorrow at Collins. Uh, we have a really nice event that the sheriff hosts on Thursday at the Walmart over in, uh, unincorporated Fort Lauderdale. It's called Shop with the Sheriff. So each child is given a gift card. It is accompanied by a deputy sheriff and we'll be there and we accompany our children from Dana Beach that have been selected to go. And they're given a gift card and these children can walk the aisles and buy whatever they want, whether it's gifts, clothes, shoes, sneakers, whatever they want. Um, they have whatever's on the gift card, they're they're told they can spend. So it's nice, they can walk and buy whatever they want. And we're also doing this year, we're doing, uh, Make a Wish, uh, Come True for a Kid. So Eric and Deputy Sessions, Detective Sessions and Taryn, um, as well as with our school resource deputies. They're going to be going to both of our elementary schools and they're going to be choosing three children, uh, from each school. And we're going to ask the children to write down five things that they would like. And our deputies are going to make sure we can make their wish come true for the holidays and we're going to get them what they want on their wish. So we've never done that before. So hopefully they don't ask for a brand-new car, but yeah, it'll be really nice. We'll make sure not to ask him. Um, our homeless outreach team, um, was able to, I know this has been a continuing thing every couple of weeks, uh, with Client C. Uh, we ended up getting the contempt of court signed today by the judge. So we got it signed and we actually hand-delivered it to Client C. So his court date is January eighth. Um, if he does not show up for his court date, at that time, the judge will issue a warrant and we will pick him up and now, which we were trying to avoid, the criminal system will now take place with Client C.
Sure, Commissioner James.
Yes, um, Client C, um, I I I really hope he gets the help that he needs. Uh, some I have residents calling me telling me he's in the middle of the road. Um, I've driven my car and I've and I've hit you up about him being in the middle of the road. I mean, his safety is is definitely first and foremost, and I know that we're limited on what we can do and what we can't do. I just feel I feel like someone's going to run him over.
Well, it's not, it it's true, someone is going to, and you obviously all know what we've done. This is, we have Rebecca McGuire, who is from the county, who leads their mental health, and she's involved with us now. So she's personally reached out to the judge on this. So now we're getting resources from the county that we didn't have. I'm hoping this time we will be able to get him into the state-mandated facility that he needs. So let's hope that it works this time. You know, we tried last time and it failed. We're going to try again, we're going a different avenue this time.
Thank you.
Um, fifteen forty Griffin Road, we had that homeless encampment that was, uh, being, um, that was we discovered over there. So we worked with B-CAD as long along with our partners from the airport and our homeless outreach deputies here in the city. And we were able to clear that homeless encampment safely and completely, and as of today, it's completely gone. And all those residents were relocated to to shelters and wherever they wanted to go. So that's very nice. It's all gone now. Uh, myself, Lieutenant Cooper and Detective Sessions, uh, spoke to Meadowbrook a couple of weeks ago and we had about a hundred people in attendance. And Ms. Chick, he asked us to come speak to the the residents. And we spoke about safety tips and we also spoke about scams targeting the elderly. Well, just so happens, there was a gentleman who was there in the audience. The next day, he contacted me and he came to our station. He was an ongoing victim of a fraud that he didn't realize. He was at a hundred and thirty thousand dollar loss as of that day. So we were able to stop the loss that day he came to see me. Um, but unfortunately, he's out a hundred and thirty thousand and that day he was about to give thirty-two more thousand to this scammer. He's an elder gentleman. He was falling for it. So the good news is, you know, we always say if we can help one person sometimes, that meeting at Meadowbrook saved that man probably the rest of his savings. Um, so that's a good story there, you know, and we're working the criminal case of it. Uh, as of right now in our city, we have a lot of operations going on. We have our annual holiday operational plan going on for all of our shopping centers. We have unmarked, uh, unmarked vehicles that are placed throughout, um, Bass Pro Shops, obviously Dana Point. And that's a holiday op that we do every year, targeting, uh, vehicle thefts and retail thefts. We also have had a increase of auto thefts and auto burglaries in our city over the last eight weeks. So, uh, myself and Lieutenant Cooper got with Sergeant Seapot and Sergeant Windrow, who is our criminal investigation sergeant in our crime suppression team. And we have an ongoing auto theft and burglary conveyance operational plan that's currently in effect now, that's taking place overnight. Um, the auto thefts are completely random throughout the city. There is not one zone or not one area that is seen more than other. They are completely spread out. And the increase in auto thefts is not just Dana Beach, the entire county has had an increase in auto theft. So it's not that it's not a Dana Beach problem, it's a county problem. Um, but we will do our part to, you know, hopefully catch who we can here in the city. And we've also started a park, uh, operational plan that we have our homeless outreach team as well as our deputies walking the parks and all their zones. And that'll continue through the, uh, with the kids coming out for the school year, uh, for winter break. So we'll be having our deputies walk the parks more than they usually do. That's all I got.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief Turala.
Thank you.
For all you do, thank you to the whole department. Thank you, Lieutenant Cooper. And, um, that's a great story about helping that elderly gentleman at Meadowbrook.
Yeah, sad, but, you know, at least it couldn't have been a lot worse.
It shows you, you're making a difference, though.
Absolutely, hundred percent. Thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we have our fire chief and, uh, the most recent award winner of the mayor's distinguished, uh, service, Sergio, I mean, Chief Sergio Pelisser.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager, city staff, and the great citizens of Dana Beach. So I want to start, uh, by thanking our partners over in Dana Point for allowing us to train at their facility all year round. We train at their parking garage, our firefighters train simulated simulating fires on high-rise buildings. They, uh, train on their sprinkler systems and they train on high-rise operations. So that keeps our our, uh, firefighters, um, at an extreme level of knowing what what's expected of them. So that if we ever have to respond to a high-rise, uh, fire or anything like that, we're we're ready to go. Um, you know, you train, we train hard so that if we ever have to save somebody, we're ready to go. And that that's the one thing that's been very key, at least since I've been here, is train, train, train. Um, accomplishments, I sent you a list of some of the accomplishments we made this year. But most importantly, I want to thank the city manager, the deputy city manager, mayor, vice mayor, the commissioners, you know, because without your support, I can't get anything done. And I've had nothing but the best support from your team to me. And, um, the first time in my thirty-three years of service here in Dana Beach, uh, as a firefighter and as your chief, that we've, uh, put a third rescue in service. And that that's a that's amazing. You know, to put another rescue in service with a crew and then to go above and beyond and make sure that I have the equipment and to make sure that I have the ability to refurbish our fire station and make it look like a brand-new fire station. I couldn't do that without your support. And our citizens need to know how, you know, how much we appreciate you as a fire team and how much you're appreciated because your your leadership. And and I really wanted to, uh, thank you for that. I also want to thank you for, um, supporting our, uh, second annual September eleventh commemoration. This year was better than the first and next year's going to be much better. So every year, my goal is to make it better. But again, I can't do any of this stuff without your support and I really do, I I just have to give you props because, um, I can't do it without your your support. I'm very proud of the fact that, um, our fire department, uh, this year took part of, uh, flying the flag at our Dana After Dark event during during Veterans Day. And the Dana After Dark event has been taken to a new level. And, um, I'm just very proud to be part of that. And, uh, as, uh, Captain Turala spoke about, um, meeting with the seniors, we we all meet with the seniors, whether we meet over at, uh, Dana Casino or at CW Thomas Parks. Uh, we recently, uh, passed out this, uh, thing called the File of Life. And basically, it's a little file that lets our citizens, our senior citizens have something that they could put on on their refrigerator that, uh, when our rescue responds, they know what kind of medications are taken, what they're allergic to, so that we're able to, uh, be be able to take better care of them. And lastly, as we finish twenty twenty-three, I eagerly anticipate achieving a lot of milestones in the fire rescue throughout twenty twenty-four. So again, thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you, chief. Thank you for the update and, uh, another year of your leadership. Okay, we're going to go to citizens' comments. Uh, before I start the citizen comments, all all comments for item twelve point one, I will bring up those comments when we get to that item. So now, uh, when I call your name, please come up, state your name and address. We're going to start with Stephen Donahue. Mr. Donahue, please come up and state your name and address. Mr. Donahue in the crowd? Okay. All right, next we have, uh, Polly Jones Mosley. Polly, please come up, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Polly Jones Mosley. I'm at seven oh one West Dana Beach Boulevard. Good evening to Mayor Ryan, Vice Mayor, the city manager, and respect to all the commissioners. I am, I came here tonight because I want to speak to you all about something pertaining to, um, Saratoga seniors. I sponsor Saratoga seniors. And, uh, they asked me to come and bring this before you all, and I told them I would do that. So I don't know whether or not, you know, you all would be able to assist, but I'm just going to still present it to you and, you know, then that way you could give me the feedback so I can take it back, you know, to the to the seniors. Uh, I'm on the board of the Dana Beach Housing Authority and I serve as a volunteer commissioner. I work alongside with with the housing director in providing the services, uh, to help the community. I sponsor and partner with Sophia of South Florida Institute for the Aging, providing computer classes for the seniors, housing, not housing, I'm sorry, learning, um, technology. So we we partner with them to try to help the seniors, you know, to be aware of what's going on in the technology world. To try to keep them abreast on ever-changing things that's going on. So we partner with Sophia, uh, um, Institute of South Florida, where they help the aging seniors. So they they come out and they do the computer classes for the seniors and also they provide other services to keep them educated with things that's going on. And also, um, we meet on a monthly basis, uh, to hear what this what the seniors', uh, concerns are. And they do bring the concerns to me, I because I am on on the board, we have monthly meetings. Well, you know, we sit down and we talk about things of what's going on. And also to, um, to help one another, to to have a partnership with one another so that there's one someone needs something, then you are there, you're available because there is a senior community. And, you know, we establish where everyone can lean on everyone, you know, if there's something that they need. So we are there for them and this is what we do all the time with the seniors. And also too, um, they asked me to see if, um, the city could provide a bus transportation. Uh, we had this, we talked about this last year, last year during the Christmas, um, lighting. We did have Parks and Recreation to help us out to bring some of the seniors over. But a lot of them can't come to the activities, you know, because they there's no transportation. So they did ask me to try to bring this before you all to see what the city can provide in helping, you know, as far as, uh, uh, help get a bus to bring them to all the activities. Because of their disability challenges and they don't have transportation, this is the reason why. And they don't want to miss the activities, but a lot of them, they do miss the activities of what's going on. So they asked me to bring this to you all's attention to see is, uh, if you all can give any type of support, you know, for the seniors of Saratoga.
Yeah, I I we discussed this previously, but, um, I definitely see your point in it, uh, as well. So, you know, we'll we'll definitely look into it. They have a community bus there too, right, at Saratoga?
We don't have a bus at all.
No, well, yeah, we have, we have a, they have a bus stop and we we have the bus.
You have a, yeah, you have a community bus, but the community bus does not come into Saratoga, you know, inside of the in the parking. They don't come, they have to go on the outside. I think it's, uh, at CW Thomas Park where the community bus is. But it does not come inside the the area, you know, for them to pick them up. It does, and I see if that can happen, that'd be great too. But, you know, they don't come inside of the complex to, uh, pick up the seniors.
Okay.
So we basically was trying to see about transportation because.
Yeah. We 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 could add a stop, we'll 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 look into it for sure. That's, uh, thank you for coming here and bringing that up. I appreciate it.
I really appreciate that because they definitely want to come to a lot of the activities. And I also brought some information to you all, if you all want to see what the program is about. Uh, the Sophia, uh, Institute that helps the seniors and provide a lot of services for the seniors. So by me working along with them, I do, uh, bring services to the community for them.
Okay.
So we can keep them enlightened on what's going on. And they want to come to the commission meetings, but they can't come. A bus will be definitely helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Polly, once again.
You're welcome.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, you could bring that up here and pass it, pass it out as well. Yeah, 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 uh, just, uh, give it to Laura, please. All right, up next, we have Kim Watkins. Ms. Watkins, please, uh, come up and state your name and address.
Hello, everyone, all commissioners, vice president, mayor, chief attorney, city manager, and the city clerk.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Kim Watkins again. Um, I live at two one seven Northwest Sixth Avenue. I wanted to address, um, the the street that I live on is like a drag race. It's like cars, it's like, you know, you know, and I have brain kids that I have to rush out, you know. I have, um, it's Sixth Avenue and Second. Sixth Avenue. It's second, yeah, it's like a Sixth Avenue, it's like a drag race and they always.
Southwest Sixth Avenue.
Yeah, and I live and I live right on Second, yeah, and it's a drag race. It's like cars, you know, like all day long, it's like kids be out there.
Please, please speak up.
It's like kids be out there and they still be like, like, I have to grab, you know, I don't know all the kids in the neighborhood, but it's always kids out there playing. And it's always cars like zooming and they like, if they not zooming past each other, they're they're drag racing behind each other. It is dangerous. And my grandbaby almost went out there and got hit one day. Yeah.
Okay, uh, we have Chief Turala here and he'll discuss this with you after, and he's taking notes as well.
Okay, and another thing I wanted to, um, address was, um, it's a lot of strange, like, cars in the neighborhood that don't live in the neighborhood, that's parked like in the area, the same street what I was telling you about, s- um, Sixth Avenue. It's, um, it's vehicles, but the vehicles move because I did see an officer came and told the people that they had to move it. And then now it's a big old boat, like a ship, it's out there and I seen some people that were sleeping in it. Yeah, and code enforcement did came. They put a note on it, it's still there, it's been over thirty days, it's like going on thirty plus. I call code enforcement, they told me that I have to give my name, all my personal information, and that it would be public records. And it's kind of scary for me and then somebody's like, oh, who called? Then it, you know, they go to public records, like, oh, we called, and then somebody could come after me and my life was in danger. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's still, it's still there. I done spoke with a couple of ladies that's in code enforcement. Um, they said the officer, well, the lady that was there, it it changed to be a man, he's there now, but nobody's, nobody still haven't came yet. And they haven't went, put another sticker on there.
You have a question, uh, Commissioner James has a question for you, Ms. Watkins?
And it's like strange people, I come out at night and the morning, strange people like sleeping in it, getting out the boat. And then we have kids just blocking a church and then we can't see on the other side of the road. And then you see somebody come walking and it's dark, you know, it's scary.
I understand. I I have a question as staff and I'm not sure if this is also a city attorney question because I get that a lot. Um, there are a lot of residents that want to call and and report certain things. Um, and then they're met with the, you have to disclose all of your information. I know that is a law. However, I don't understand how code doesn't see certain things. Like a big boat or other things that residents call and complain about. Um, it's me calling it to say what the residents have seen, but I I'm not understanding what, why code isn't picking up some of these large-ticket items that our residents are calling about. Are they waiting, I don't know if the protocol is to wait. No, I don't know if the protocol is to wait for a resident, but what is the job of the code enforcement officers? I think that there needs to be a conversation and whatever zones they have, they're really going by the code, especially with things like like a boat. A resident shouldn't have to tell us that a big boat has been there and it's been, um, people sleeping in there. Like, those are certain things that we shouldn't have to rely on our residents to put themselves in danger because I I know some years back, you know, someone's, so a resident was retaliated against and and that is also a concern. So I'm just trying to meet in the middle with with, um, having more expectations on on our. with, with, um, having more expectations on, on our, on our team so that we don't put our residents in harm's way.
I'll let the manager speak about staff, I just wanted to address to everybody in the, in the audience. There is a state law unfortunately and the, the Tallahassee made this, that anytime there is a complaint against a property or a code violation, the requirement under state law is to get the name of the person making the complaint, their phone number, their email, their, and their address. So, and all of that is public record and it's nothing that we can do about that requirement because then we're in violation of state law. And I understand the current concern of many people about, you know, telling information about a neighbor or a stranger that you don't know and the fear of it. Unfortunately, that is the requirement, we can't act on anonymous complaints. I'll let the manager speak about code.
In, in regards to code, one of the things that we just did, um, I believe last year or the year before, is, um, every code officer is assigned to a zone and every six months they rotate. That, uh, that boat in particular, that, or, or a bus that I know that I spoke to Commissioner James about, whether they see it or we get a call, we move immediately. But as part of, of the record is what came first? And a lot of times it's the actual resident that's there every day. But our expectations of our code officers is that there are eyes and the boots on the ground. So in regards to this address that Elora just took down where you're talking about this, I'm going to go back and speak with our Deputy City Manager and our Director of Community Development to see who that code area, that code officer is for that area and we're going to address that. Not just with that code officers, but with all our code officers because we expect proactive efforts from every single department, every single day.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Please go back and speak to Captain Torella, take down the information and the details for you. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Dave Reich. Mr. Reich, please come up and state your name and address.
No, that's the, no, this is all work of the county bus.
Oh, okay, that's, never, never mind, Dave, not, not right now. Alright, WM Danoski? Danoski? Oh, Will, Will Danoski? William Danoski? Please state your name and address, sir.
William Danoski, 4464 Southwest 37th Avenue. I had a traffic concern, it sounds like those are being directed back to the good captain there, I'll talk to him after. But I had a couple of questions about the electronic vehicle chargers.
Yes.
How do installing those, or one, where does funding come from those?
We have a yearly, um, a city budget that we pass.
So it's city taxes. And then how would that benefit every resident in the, in the city to have the, the city taxes paying to charge their electric cars?
Every resident that comes has an opportunity to, to use that, um, it's a service. Like whether it's parks or your, your vehicles.
So you get free charging? And do other people get free gas for their cars? I just don't see how it's, you know, it's a real good use of my tax money if they chose to get an electronic car. I don't know why we're paying for electricity from the city to, they could, in essence, go there every day and never have to pay anything for the electronic cars and just run them around. Uber drivers, pizza delivery people, whoever. Was that voted on or is it just something everybody decided?
It's guidance that, that we get from...
Voted on by the citizens or...
Um, uh, yeah, go ahead Commissioner James.
Yes, hi, good afternoon. You know, there, there are a lot of things that entice and, and, and that our residents get a benefit of, you know, we have residents that get a discount on going to the beach and it doesn't necessarily benefit everyone that might not, might want to go to the beach. We have things here at City Services, it's a nominal cost, um, it's not a, it's not a, uh, fast charging, like you would go to those spots and get it charged up for twenty minutes. It's that you would have to be here for hours in order to try and take advantage of it, but there are many places that are becoming environmentally friendly and we are choosing to have green practices and, and look towards our environment and entice people to be more environmentally friendly. And so anybody who, who will be coming here, i- is just a benefit, it's not going to fully charge your car if you're not here overnight or something like that, but it's just something to be able to, you know, support our initiatives of being more of a green city.
I appreciate the explanation.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danoski. Okay, that's it for citizen comments right now. Okay, on to the consent agenda, is there any item that the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Alright, I see none. Commissioner James?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner James to approve the consent agenda. I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None opposed, okay. Alright, moving along. Got a lot accomplished in the consent agenda. Okay, we don't have any bids or requests for proposals, so we'll move on to item ten point one, quasi judicial hearings. Eve, please read item ten point one.
Sure. For the next three, four items which are all quasi judicial and that's going to be the FLL Airport Lodging, the two applications for that, Ravenswood LLC and the Franmar Properties. Anyone who's going to be testifying, including staff, I'd like you to raise your right hand to be sworn in. You don't have to stand up if you don't want to. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. As we go through each item, I will also ask for disclosures from the commission. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach approving the plat note amendment for the NCL plat of applicant FLL Airport Lodging LLC for the property located at Gulfstream Way within the City of Daniel Beach and providing for conflicts. As this has two items, I'm just going to read both into the record. It's a resolution of the City Commission of, of the City of Daniel Beach approving the site plan and variances of applicant FLL Airport Lodging LLC for the property located at Gulfstream Way, providing for conditions, conflicts, and an effective date. Both of these are community development items that, and again, they're being heard together, ten point one and ten point two.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Tonight before you, it's the item for Element Hotel, it's located at the Gulfstream Way. The property, as you can see, it's a very odd shape. The background of the property, as everybody knows, it's been a vacant land for the longest and it's a one point twenty-four acre. The applicant is proposing both the plat note amendment as well as the site plan for the construction of a seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five square foot, one hundred and fifteen room hotel, six-story high. At the same time, the plat amendment intends to expand the intensity of the hotel by amending the restriction of the one hundred and fifteen room availability. The property, it's located in the zoning designation for the industrial research office commercial, the future line use designation is commercial and there are no code violations. So the request tonight before you, it's for the plat note amendment as well as the site plan, as previously mentioned, for the construction of the hotel for one hundred and fifteen room and six-story hotel high. As well as the site plan, the applicant is, well, this is the site plan. As you can see, the property, it's very narrow to the center and wider to the top and the bottom. And the applicant, it's requesting five variances for height requirements, setback requirements, landscape buffer, perimeter landscape buffer, and vehicle use area landscape buffer. The applicant has provided justification statements explaining the need for each request and admits the criteria from the variance from the Land Development Code. All the details for the request are attached into the, um, report provided to you. They provided a community outreach on October, I'm sorry, August twenty-second, sending notices within a thousand feet of the property and we haven't received any objections to this item. In regards to the Development Review Committee, they went through review on May nineteenth, July twenty-fourth, September twenty-second, and November of this year and although they do have comments, uh, they'll be addressed prior to issuance of the permit. And the DRC comments are listed as conditions of approval into the resolution. On the budgetary impact, the development project will expand the city's tax roll and will be required to pay the public art impact fee up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This, in regards to the resiliency efforts, the site plan identifies twenty-nine percent of pervious area where the code requires a minimum of twenty percent. On the strategic plan, the application supports the furthering following goals, which is having more attractive, beautiful communities at our entrances, protection and enhancement of property values, as well as expanding business in the City of Daniel Beach. And the, uh, staff is recommending approval of the resolution of the site plan with the variances and the plat having the conditions of approval as, um, addressed prior to issuance of the permit. And I'm here if you have any questions, as well as the applicant is here. If you'd like to hear from the applicant's presentation.
Before we go there, I just want to make sure that I actually get the record clear as to any disclosures. Has anyone had any communications from the, anybody in the community or from the applicant himself or his, uh, his development group? And if you have, can you state so on the record and whether you can remain impartial after having received that communication?
I spoke with the attorney for the developer the other day, um, on the phone and I can remain impartial.
Anybody else? Commissioner James the same? Did everybody speak with the developer's attorney? No, okay. That's, yes. Thank you. Would you like to hear from the applicant?
Uh, this is a public hearing, does anybody have any comment on this? Alright, would anybody on the commission like to hear from the applicant or have any questions? Okay, I see a motion.
Would be a motion to approve items ten point one and ten point two? Do them separately, the first one is ten point one, which is the plat note amendment for this application. The second vote would be on the variances and site plan approval.
We could vote on both at the same time, yeah.
If there's a motion, I'm trying.
Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion to approve of ten point one and ten point two.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Davis. Call to a vote, please, Laura.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, now on, that was the part of ten point one and ten point two, just to be clear. Alright, item ten point three, please Eve.
A resolution of the City Commission approving the site plan and variance applications submitted by the property owner, Ravenswood LLC for the property located at four three zero zero Ravenswood Road in the City of Daniel Beach, provided for conflicts and an effective date. Again, do we have any disclosures on this application? Seeing none.
Uh, Commissioner James?
I'm sorry.
Somebody called me, but I don't know for what.
Who did you speak with and can you be impartial?
I, I spoke with Mr. Mealy, is this Mr. Mealy's project, correct?
No, the last one.
No, that was the last one.
I did speak with someone from Ravenswood, I don't remember who.
Yeah, I don't either.
And do, can you be impartial after having had that communication?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director of Community Development. This application is for site plan modification and variance for the Next Tran business located at forty-three hundred Ravenswood Road. On the screen is the location map where Next Tran is currently located. It is on the, um, it's located between Ravenswood Road and I ninety-five, just south of Lee Wagner, which is the road that goes up and over I ninety-five to the airport. The property is zoned industrial, has a land use of industrial as well. Um, it's almost, it's a seven and a half acre site, it's a large site and the current, um, existing use is heavy-duty truck, sales, and service. And there are currently no violations on the property. The applicant today is requesting an expansion by incorporating an accessory storage structure on the site. This is, um, some needed, um, storage that they have on the site. There is separation requirements from the existing structures based on building code requirements which results in pushing the building a little bit closer to the southern property line, which is why they need the variance of five feet that they're requesting as part of their site plan modification. This is, um, some elevations of the storage structure that they're proposing. And this is the area in yellow is the location where they're proposing that, a building that is along the south property line, which is adjacent to the canal. The variance itself is to allow fifteen-foot setback where twenty-foot is required. There were community outreach letters that were, um, sent to adjacent, uh, property owners within a thousand-foot radius, which is the same that the city notifies. I know the, um, we did have one, a property owner who had concerns about the property, reached out to staff. We connected that person, that property owner with the, with the applicant and I know that they had some conversations. Some of the concerns that were raised by the adjacent property owner were related to drainage, questions about the variance itself and, um, as well as the, the building that they're proposing. As I stated previously, the site plan modification did go through the Development Review Committee, which includes, um, engineering consultants that look at the drainage on the site as well as, you know, circulation, building placement and there are, all their, the critical items have been addressed prior to public hearing. What remains will be addressed prior to the issuance of a permit should this application be approved. The project did go before the DRC in May and again in July. The application itself does support the city's strategic plan and, um, in terms of budgetary impact, approval of the site plan modification will allow, you know, the feasibility and the, the needed expansion of this particular business that's currently located in the city. The staff is recommending approval of the resolution for the site plan modification and variance, providing that the remaining DRC comments are made conditions of approval, um, prior to the issuance of the building permit. And I'm available for questions and I know the, um, applicant is available as well as their attorney, if you have any questions with them.
Uh, this is a public hearing, is anybody, uh, from the public wish to speak on this item? Please state your name and address.
Dave Reich, forty-one sixty-one Southwest Twenty-second Avenue.
Yeah, yes.
I noticed that the building has vents open to the outside at ground level and that, uh, doors are not allowed to be closed all the way, they have to be left open five inches. So I was saying, well, why would that be? And, uh, and, uh, I'm concerned that any of the chemicals that are in there could come out and that area floods, if a flood went in, it could grab the chemicals and put them in the, to the canal. I use the canal, a lot of people use the canal from the county all over and I'm concerned about the chemicals going into the canal. And, um, I was suggesting that they put up a, uh, either keep the twenty feet to keep the pollution out of the canal or to put up a impervious small wall or something so that if they have a spill or something, it won't go into the canal, or raise the building so that they can have it high enough so they can close the doors. And, um, I explained all this to the gentleman that called me today, but for whatever reasons they had, I think, they didn't, you know, couldn't answer any of them and they didn't, seemed to think it was as important as I did about the environment for the canal. So I would say that to deny the variance or have them move the building or do something to positively stop any of the chemicals stored in that building from either a flood coming in and getting them or them having a leak and having it go into the canal. You know, I use the canal and I just think the canal is getting dumped on and been getting dumped on for decades, so that's my concern and I hope that you guys can see that for the good of the people, the health, welfare of the citizens of Daniel and Broward County, that you can somehow have them mitigate that to the best extent possible. to the best extent possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reich. Please.
Richard Coker, attorney for the applicant, I'm here with James O'Brien of, uh, Nextran, and our engineer, Daniel Blasko. Uh, first of all, we're had, happy to answer any questions you may have from the staff report, and the staff presentation. This is a small addition to an existing site that's been in business for a couple years. They're doing great, and, uh, they're taking, uh, equipment and vehicles that have generally been stored outside, and they want a building to store them inside, and also to maintain them. This is, um, a metal building, just like the other metal buildings on the site, they're all, uh, they're all metal. And as you know where this site is, it's, it's bounded on the south by the Dania Cut Off Canal, uh, Ravenswood Road on the west, 42nd, uh, on the north, and then I-95 is a, uh, on the east, it's a contained site, uh, it's, it's, uh, an industrial site. This, the site plan originally, and this small addition has been re- reviewed first by our engineers, and they certified them and submitted those plans to you. They've been reviewed by your professional staff, and then they've been reviewed by your consulting engineers, all top-notch people. Uh, they, they are applying for appropriate licenses with Broward County. Broward County has a, um, um, wastewater, I mean, a, a surface water management license process that you go through, they're in the middle of that. Everything about this small addition and this small site is being reviewed by professionals at every step. We've talked to, our, our engineers have talked to Mr. Blask, Mr. Reich? What, what's your name? Oh, I'm sorry, I, thank you. Uh, we, uh, talked to him and, uh, tried to tell, walk him through the process of approval. There is, there is nothing in this small building that raises any of the concerns that he expressed to you tonight. This is a, there are no hazardous materials in that building, except what you would find in a small mechanic shop, and they have to, uh, you know, repair a car, something like that. These are just machinery. There is nothing, there's no hazardous waste, um, license that's being applied for, which would be a requirement if you had drums of any hazardous waste. The concerns expressed by the gentleman are just not founded, and all of these things have been discussed with your staff and your consulting engineers, and if there was an issue, it would be addressed during the permitting process, but since there's not an issue, no one has, uh, there, there is nothing required extraordinary to address the small mechanic shop, where the machines and the equipment that are currently outside can be, uh, stored, you know, in a, in a, uh, uh, in a sheltered environment. So, um, we're, we're happy to bring our engineer up here, or the representative of Nextran, and address any questions you may have, but we've tried to address, um, the concerns raised, both in writing and in person. And...
So, uh, Nextran is, uh, it's private charter buses, correct? Or?
No, they, they sell equipment.
They sell equipment?
They sell equipment, and they maintain equipment.
Okay, they just sell equipment and maintain equipment?
Yes.
And the type of equipment they sell?
Yes.
Is machinery equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
They do a, a great job, if you go by there, you know, everything is clean and perfectly in line. They're doing a good business, and this is gonna help them expand that business.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I just have two questions, and maybe one was already addressed. The first one is, why, why are you requesting a 15-foot setback instead of the 20?
The, the building that's needed for, and you know where that setback is, it's, it's, um, the setback is on the south side, adjacent to the canal. The setback is needed because there's a 10-foot distance requirement in the building code that, that has to be there between buildings. And so for this building to meet the specifications needed to store this equipment, the size of that building to fit in that area, it can only fit a 15, it's, I think it's 15 feet three inches from the property line, so, uh, a little bit less than a five-foot variance is required in order to meet the building code requirements and meet the specs of the building.
Okay, and then why doesn't the door shut flush? Why is there, I think you said five inches?
It, it is a, it's a flood drainage area, uh, consideration. They wait, they close within five inches. If there is a major flood, like we had last time, uh, in April, you know, uh, if there's a major flood, it, the water flows through, it doesn't get caught up in the building, uh, and then drain, drain out. It just flows through.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a design consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any more, uh, any more questions, any more com- public comments? Okay, do I have a motion? Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Just for the record, cause I, it's been a long night for me, um, there's absolutely no harmful chemicals that would be in this, in this, in this building. I, that, not minimal, not anything to, to, to go to this gentleman's question.
As, as I, as I mentioned, nothing more than you would find in a small mechanic shop. Change, world change. Can I have the, the gentleman come up and explain in detail?
Yes, because I, I just, I mean, because it, more than what you would find in a normal mechanic shop. I, I don't know what that means, I don't know that that's not harmful to our environment if it were to go back into our canal and things like that, so I'm not familiar with, what's normal in a mechanic shop in order for me to make that determination as far as the environment is concerned.
You were sworn in, correct, sir?
I'm sorry?
You were sworn in?
Yes, I was. Um, thank you, uh, for having, uh, me here tonight, um, and, uh, thank you for giving me an opportunity to answer these questions, so the, uh...
Please state your name and address.
Sorry, my name is James O'Brien, and, uh, I live at, uh, 731 Northeast 16th Avenue in Fort Lauderdale. And I'm the general manager of, uh, Nextran Truck Centers. We represent Mack trucks and Volvo trucks, uh, so we sell and, uh, service those vehicles, uh, in the facility here, uh, in Dania Beach. Uh, the, uh, specific, uh, use of this accessory building is for spare parts, uh, so our business, as it continues to grow, uh, we require, uh, these parts to, uh, repair vehicles, or to sell them to, uh, individuals who come in to our, uh, uh, store to buy and repair their own vehicles. Uh, so, uh, there's really no, uh, chemicals at all, or liquids, uh, it would be things like, um, a hood for a truck, a panel for a truck, a, uh, fifth wheel, uh, that is used to connect a trailer. Uh, so the space here is being used to, uh, give us more part storage, uh, so that we can better serve our customers and continue to grow our business.
Can I just ask one question for you? The actual service of the trucks is in another part of the building?
Yeah, it's in one of the, yeah, one of the existing buildings has service base, uh, where the, uh, trucks are actually serviced.
So, this build, the building that we're discussing now is purely a storage building?
It's a storage for, uh, parts.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hold on one second, Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. If you have trucks, and you, you're talk, you're, I'm, I'm hearing him, and I'm hearing you, and I don't want to contradict anything you're saying, but I, I hear that they're, they're trucks, and it's a service business, and you say there's no, uh, chemicals and so on, but anytime you drive a truck, there's either oil on the wheels, there's either oil coming dripping from a, a transmission or a thing, uh, motor, uh, if they, do they change the oil in, in these particular building at all?
Yeah, in the existing service buildings, but not in the new building.
So there is a chemical in the building? I'm, I'm talking to him, sir, when I'm done, you can take your turn, okay? So, but you are changing oil inside that building, cause you just said a second ago you're changing fenders and, and hoods and stuff, I didn't hear anything about oil or gas, or anything like that?
Yeah, so, uh, sorry, let me, um, be clear, the new building is just for spare parts, and we, uh, repair and service vehicles in another building, one of the existing buildings.
Okay, so that building, there is no service, there's just storing parts in there?
That's correct.
Okay, and, okay, so that would be a different story, cause if there's nothing in there being stored, that's chemically bound, and it's just a storage shed or a storage building for parts and accessories, there is no other chemicals in there, so you wouldn't store any oil in there, or, okay. So the next thing is, which really confuses me, is that why would anybody want water in their building, why wouldn't you close your door and allow the water hit, is it, aren't we designed, uh, and the building's going up, is, isn't there some drainage ditch, it's supposed to be around the, uh, let me finish with him, please, sir, you're being rude, okay? I, I don't want, but I want to talk to him, when I'm done, you can talk, okay? You're not in courtroom. Please, okay? So, what I'm asking you is that you have, um, you know, a door that opens, and, and stays open, so the water can drain through, which concerns me, because if there is anything on the floor, any chemicals, but you say there's not, that would drain into the canal, okay? Cause it would, oil would drain into the canal if there was anything in there. So I have to believe you, and, and unless we're proven different by our city staff, they say that there's no, nothing inside that building. So if that, they say, my, if our staff says that, then I believe it, okay? Cause I trust our staff. I just would not want to have it come back in there and have an inspection done, and then there's, like you say, there's a oil in the building, cause that would not go good for all of us up here. The thing is, is that I'm, I'm concerned over the fact that it is a storage building, if that's all it is, and why a door is open, I just don't never, I just never heard of a building, I'm sure you're, you're telling me that the architect, I'm not an architect, so if there's a reason for a door to be open, I've never heard of it before in my whole life, and I'm prob, I'm, I'm an old guy, you know, so I just haven't figured out why a door would be open, but, uh, that, that, it confuses me.
Well, the existing buildings are, are, are designed like that, correct?
That is correct.
And this new building's gonna be designed the same way?
So, so, so in other words, if there's a rain, you'd want the water run through your building, there's no, like, door stops on your door to keep the water out, or anything like that?
That's, yeah, that's correct, it was designed the same way as the existing building that was...
Is there, or, do we have drainage ditches around that building that goes into play? Eleanor? I see, I, I trust her.
And, and just, just one more question for you, sir?
Yes.
Before Eleanor comes up? When, when you change out of oil, there's, there's guidelines, and there's proper ways that you have to dispose of it, you don't just go out back and dump it on the ground.
That, that is correct.
So, you guys have tanks and everything?
We do.
Where you properly store it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Eleanor, come on up.
I just wanted to address your concern about the, um, open doors. So they act as a flood vent, because this property is in a flood zone, and it floods regularly, they're required to provide flood vents in their, um, buildings. Their existing buildings didn't have it, so I actually personally toured this, um, facility.
Okay.
They are a very clean and well-kept facility.
Okay.
And that's why the doors have to stay open, to allow the flood to move through the buildings.
Okay, I've just never heard, but I, if you say so.
Thank you, I appreciate your confidence.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, learn something new every day, huh?
Did you have anything you want to say to me, sir, now that I'm done with him? Sir?
Anything to add, sir?
Oh, I, I'm good now, thank you, though.
But maybe you could explain, uh, emphasize it more to Commissioner Salvino, from an engineering's perspective?
It's just a form of, uh, it's called wet flood, correct?
Yeah, well, she just explained, I'm okay with it now, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kinda wanna hear it.
Well, I'm, I mean, I got my answer.
All right. Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, uh, any, any other comment? Okay. Come on up, sir. Name and address again, please?
William Danaski, 4464 Southwest 37th Avenue. I wasn't aware of this project at all, but I'm, I can't help but be curious. Uh, they're talking about a new building, that'll have five inches under the door, and things will sweep through, and there won't be anything stored in there, and the existing building, if I understand right, is where there is service, and there's oil and stuff, uh, stored, and things like this, and that existing building, it doesn't really have to do with the variance, but that one has five inches, so there is water sweeping through there, and admittedly by the applying party, has hazardous materials being stored there. How are those hazardous materials with the, admitted the water's going through a flood vent, as they call, how is that being kept from the, uh, in the existing building, even before we get to this variance? How's that being kept from the canal? I was only curious, guys, sitting there, and, uh, it just didn't seem to jive with me. We're applying for a new building, and yet the existing building is being admitted that there's hazardous materials being stored, and service being done with oil and those kind of things, and there's a flood vent, that being keeping a door open, uh, stated five inches, to build floodwater to be, the whole purpose of that is for floodwater to go through and enter the canal. Where are those being stored, and how's that going on? Maybe they can answer.
Yeah. Sir, please?
Uh, Daniel Blasko, um, uh, addresses 1866, uh, 38th Ave, Dania Beach, Florida. Um, so, uh, it's an existing facility, um, that went through site plan review, um, I think back in like 2019, it was an administrative process, um, and the city had required at the time that, uh, because the site was within a flood zone, that the, uh, vents be put there to provide some sort of flood protection for the building.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner, a motion? Still trying, okay, go ahead, Commissioner James.
No, Commissioner Salvino, and, and the gentleman really had me thinking, I'm not understanding, um, we're talking about chemicals and it being a flood vent, and some of the buildings have chemicals in them, although the one in question tonight does not. What about the one, I, I've never known that we had a building that is partially open, the doors are partially open, I mean, that's not something that comes across our desk all the time, and that they have chemicals in there, and the way we flood, and they're in a flood zone, and those chemicals can flood out of those buildings, so now I'm all confused.
Uh, please, please, yeah, please come up and clarify, I thought there is no chemicals being stored, I thought it's anything that'd be fine in a normal machine shop. And, and then in the old building, the only chemicals that would be stored would be what? Oil, right? That'd be it.
In the old, in the old buildings, they service the, the vehicles?
Yeah.
Like in a, in, in a service shop. And the new building is nothing but storage of materials.
Okay.
In the service po- shop, do you, do you properly dispose of the chemicals? That, just answer that question, I think that covers the issue.
Absolutely, they do everything by permit, and, and as Eleanor came up here and explained to you, everyone in the city has inspected this whole process and this business, it's very clean, the floors are clean, they do everything by a permit, everything, everybody that uses any hazardous, hazardous materials has to have a permit with proper disposal.
Uh, come back on up, uh, Mr. Reich, state your name and address one more time.
Dave Reich, 4161 Southwest 22nd Avenue. Do you guys have a hazardous waste permit?
Okay.
Does, this company has a hazardous waste permit?
Yeah.
Do you have a hazardous waste license?
Okay, was that your final question, sir, please?
Well, I'm asking you, does the company have a hazardous waste license?
Okay, okay. All right.
Uh, there is no hazardous waste, it's just motor oil.
Thank you.
I have an aircraft business, I change oil, I have a hazardous waste license. If you change oil and have waste oils stored there, you have to have a hazardous waste license. If they change oil on their trucks, they should have one.
Okay. Yeah, please, this is, we're closed for comments here. Commissioner Salvino?
Make a motion, pass the item, Mayor.
We have a motion from Commissioner Salvino. A second from Vice Mayor Lawwellen. Uh, Laura, please call to a vote.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawwellen?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay.
Would you like me to read 10.4?
Please, Eve, I'm 10.4.
A resolution approving the site plan modification of applicant Franmore Properties of South Florida LLC for the property located 2181 Southwest 42nd Street in the city of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts and ineffective date, this is a community development item, and before they speak, do we have any disclosures?
Any disclosures?
No.
Seeing none.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, this application is for site plan modification for a property located on Southwest 42nd Street, known as Academy Bus. This application is located almost catty corner from the previous, um, application we were discussing. It's, um, west of Ravenswood Road. It's, um, west of Ravenswood Road, just north of Southwest Forty-second Street. This is the, um, on the screen is the location of the property. You can see it is, um, west of Ravenswood Road. The property is, um, the property in question is currently zoned M-two. It was recently annexed into the city of Dana Beach from Broward County. It consists of, um, several parcels. And it, um, currently has a building on the property that they're looking to reuse as part of the Academy Bus business, which is, um, the main office building is located on the west side of Ravenswood Road. But they have assembled some properties on the east, I'm sorry, the main building, main office buildings on the east side of Ravenswood Road. They've assembled some buildings on the west side, including these properties. The properties in question today is less than a half an acre. Um, it is west of Interstate ninety-five and Ravenswood Road. And it's between Southwest Twenty-second Avenue and Engler's Avenue. It currently has a one thousand three hundred ninety square foot, one-story building that they are utilizing as, um, office space, a dispatch office, I believe, on the property. It, as I said, it was recently annexed into the city by prior legislative delegation, which approved that annexation. Um, and over the summer in July, the planning and zoning board approved site plan for, um, some of the parcels to the north for utilization of bus parking. Um, those are the parcels that were in the city. It was less than an acre, so it went to the planning and zoning board at that time. Since the annexation and assembly of the land, it's larger than an acre, which kicks it to the city commission, which is why you're seeing these parcels that are now in the city before you today. Um, as I stated, the applicant is requesting the site plan modification. They're incorporating three newly annexed lots. They're looking to repurpose the existing building for office and, um, the land around that building for employee parking. And this is, the part in yellow is the newly annexed parcels. So those are the parcels that are under site plan, um, review tonight. The parcels to the north are what was approved by planning and zoning board over the summer. There was community outreach that was conducted by the applicant, um, earlier, um, previous month, and again, earlier this month. Um, they've, uh, notified adjacent property owners of their activities. Um, multiple property owners were also contacted, um, in July over the summer for the first site plan. And we received at that time some letters of support from the adjacent property owners. We also received, um, questions and concerns from one of the adjacent property owners, who, um, again, expressed questions and concerns as this application came forward. Um, we, staff met with the app, with that property owner and we connected them again with the developer. And I know that they had conversations with the developer as well about some of their questions and concerns. Many of those questions and concerns were the same that were raised over the summer. And planning and zoning board ultimately approved the site plan that was before them at that time. Um, the site plan identifies thirty, um, thirty-eight percent, um, almost thirty-nine percent of the land will be purvous area, which meets the purvous area requirements of our land development regulations. Um, this site plan did go through the development review committee, October and November. Um, any outstanding comments, um, will be conditions of approval of, um, prior to the issuance of the permit, if the application is approved this evening. It does support the city strategic plan and for the budgetary impacts, um, it, it allows expansion of an existing building, um, and increase tax real to the city as well. At this point, staff's recommending approval of the resolution for the site plan modification, providing that the, um, DRC comments are made, conditions of approval prior to the issuance of the permit. And I'm available if you have any questions. The applicant, um, has representatives here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner James?
Yes, Corinne, um, I saw the public outreach and then I saw those questions, um, that they asked. Were those addressed or they're just showing me that the questions, showing us that the questions that they had?
Yes, they have been addressed. Yes, um, staff feels comfortable with the, that the, um, those things have been addressed through the site plan. I don't know that the person raising the questions are satisfied with the answers, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I have comments already, uh, registered. Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll call you up. And, um, just, uh, for the sake of a business meeting, you have three minutes to speak. So please, uh, get all your questions and concerns, um, at that time because, uh, you know, you're not gonna come back up after. So, uh, three minutes and we'll start with, uh, Mr. Dave Reich again. You say your name and address? Okay. Yep. Please give it to Alora.
Okay, my name is Dave Reich. I am the owner of the residential property to the west of the Academy Bus Site Plan. I am requesting modification to the large-scale site plan. The site plan proposes the vehicle access entrance beyond Southwest Twenty-second Street. Dana Beach Ordinance one-ten-two-ninety-dash-three. Bus depots for storage and maintenance of buses and related office facilities states, the property must have direct access to a collector roadway as designated by the Broward County Traffic Waste Plan. Ravenswood Road on the east side and Southwest Forty-second on the south side of the plan are collector roads and need to be used as access to this, to this, uh, site plan. How do you propose to comply with that?
Please continue, please.
Just keep, all right, you're not gonna, all right. The site plan proposes to park twelve-foot tall buses on the site. Dana Beach Ordinance one-ten-dash-two-ninety-dash-four. Outdoor parking or storage of vehicles must be screened from view of any public street. How do you propose to comply with that ordinance? Number three. Uh, the buses being parked in the site plan operate are noisy, have exhaust smell, emit glare from vehicles, vehicle lighting, especially at night. How do you propose to keep these health hazards on this site plan? This, uh, site plan is gonna create hundreds of vehicle road trips every day. How do you propose to stop the excess traffic from running down a, uh, residential street and, uh, changing the character of the surrounding properties? The site plan poles are twenty-five feet high for the lighting of the site plan. They will be emitting glare into the neighborhood approximately twelve hours a day, especially at night. How do you propose to keep the site plan lighting from impacting the neighborhood? The site plan, as it's zoned now, proposes to park twelve-foot tall buses on the site plan. Dana Beach Ordinance, section one-fifteen-dash-forty. Overnight fleet parking, storage and rear internal side yard must not be visible from any street. How do you propose to comply with this ordinance? In that packet I gave you, there's a set of six pictures. A is the entrance to the site plan from Southwest Forty-second Street, which is a collector roadway, which is where it should be, be entered on. The site plan lighting on, the light on picture B is the east, east of the site plan. Picture C is the bus lighting at twelve feet tall. It's gonna be at night. Picture D is the bus parking on the south side of Southwest Forty-second Street. These buses use Southwest Twenty-second Avenue. You're gonna be having buses like that parking all over down that street. Picture E is a bus using Southwest Twenty-second Terrace to turn around on a residential street. Academy Bus in Miami.
Thank you, Mr. Reich.
Can I have a few more minutes just to plead? I'll take it for a minute.
No, sir, you, I'll give you, I'll give you fifteen, four seconds to wrap it up.
I do not object to my neighbor using this property for intended use as long as a twelve-foot tall continuous impervious wall be erected along the west side of the site plan. No access to the site plan from Southwest Twenty-second Avenue, lowering the light poles for the site plan to ten feet tall. This is the minimum that needs to be done to have a sense of community, one Dana Beach community between industrial and residentially zoned neighbors. This is the minimum that must be done to prevent a reduction of my property's value. I am asking the city commission to list these requests as conditions of approval in the site plan. You are the only ones that have the ability to produce the desired results of both neighbors and a harmonious community.
Thank you, Mr. Reich. Okay, uh, for more public comments, we have Tito Rodriguez.
Those, those three are my grandchildren and I was, they were gonna give me their time to speak, to speak more.
Okay.
So there's three, those three other ones.
Okay, um, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow it. Okay. All right, next we have Derek Hankerson. Please state your name and address, Mr. Hankerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Derek Hankerson, seven forty-six, Southwest Third Street, Dana Beach. City manager and commissioners, I speak here today as an individual who serves on planning and zoning board.
Before you go on, Mr. Hankerson, since you weren't here early, I just need to swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
There were issues that came before planning and zoning this past summer. As a city attorney has, uh, described and Ms. LaJoy, uh, described, there are additional issues now. But there are some facts that the applicant, excuse me, that Mr. Reich did not disclose to you that I think are relevant. Um, for the sake of being brief, one, the residential building that Mr. Reich described is not a homesteaded property, as well as the fact that there is a business tax license associated with it. He lives elsewhere in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And my statement back this summer was, if this was your primary residence, I would be your champion regarding bus fumes, et cetera. But it seems as though there is some sort of business that's also being associated with this. We have the issue of the grandchildren and his wife are allegedly living there, but he lives in another city. So it just sounds as though he wants it both ways. He wants the regulations to be the same as that for residents, yet he's running a business. So I urge you to, uh, just look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Okay, uh, any more further public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone. Uh, please come up, sir.
Uh, good evening. For the record, my name is Lake Curran, planning consultant, office at eight oh eight East Los Olas Boulevard in Fort Lauderdale. And I'm here on behalf of Academy Bus. Um, the staff has outlined the proposal very well. Um, I, we've met for Mr. Reich in the past last summer. Uh, we sent out the community notice, we never heard from him this time. Uh, but we've seen the comments he's made. They're the same comments that he made before. And what's, what's different and what's important is his property is while it's zoned residential, the land use plan, which is your overall guide, is for probably decades been industrial. So really his zone is, is not in conformity with your land use plan and has been for a long time. And the access of a twenty-second is proper. You provided a, a traffic engineer's statement to the record, the staff has it. It's improper to do what he suggests, that what he suggested you'd have three openings within a hundred and sixty feet along that area. And that would not be allowed. And so that's inappropriate. As it goes to the wall, no wall is even required. At the time of the P and Z hearing, we offered to volunteer an eight-foot wall. And that's, you know, it goes back to his fact that they've got some residential properties there and it's all residential zoning, but it, there's really no wall required. And we have, did a sight line that showed that our ten-foot and twelve-foot plantings that, at, at, at the beginning of planting are sufficient to give a shield. And I'm not gonna say you won't see any bus. You might see some bus, but that, that, these plants will be planted at ten-foot and twelve-foot and then they'll grow. So in a short period of time, they'll be much taller. Plus there's restrictions in there on the plantings about, the FPL line runs from forty-second to about halfway up the property on the west side. So I, I believe all these things have been addressed. We'll meet the no ways and ordinances and all the odor ordinances of the city, as any other developer would have to or any other property owner. Uh, so we think we're in compliance with the, the rules and the regulations and the DRC review. And we understand those conditions and we support the conditions, uh, to get a building permit. We just ask for your support to see.
Thank you, sir. Well, actually, Mr. Millie, uh, a question for you. Oh. Lake Cur, sorry.
Mr. Millie's a very good friend.
You guys all, you know.
That's a very good, that's a very nice compliment, I appreciate that. I will tell Mr. Millie in the morning.
I, I just want to verify, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with this area as well. Everything that surrounds it is still zoned industrial, right? And besides this property across the way that's been, you know, grandfathered in variance residential.
Right, right.
Okay. Uh, this is mainly a res, an industrial area.
It's an industrial area, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
At some point, the city will have to rezone the area, the remaining residential properties industrial.
Yes, okay. And then this, uh, this company is, is one of the largest in the, in the nation.
Yes. Um, it's the largest private bus company in the nation. They're excited to be here. They're consolidating their South Florida operations to this, this facility and the one they've already established. And I think you've seen they've already improved the one on the east side of, uh, Ravenswood. There's, I have a before and after on a, on a PowerPoint, but they've done a, a nice job upgrading that property. And they're looking forward to working here in the city. And there's a lot of opportunity for their growth and a lot of, a lot of employment opportunities. And they'd be happy to have a, a job fair here at city hall or wherever is appropriate.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Cur. Uh, Commissioner Davis, question?
Just real quick, this would be their headquarters, the Academy Bus.
Well, for, for this, for South Florida, cause you know, their, their main headquarters is in New Jersey.
Okay.
They have twenty offices in the country. But this will be their main South Florida location, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Nope, okay. Uh, I already said, I already said, yeah, we're. Okay, I have a motion to, for approval from Commissioner James, seconded by Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Uh, Laura, call, call a roll on this one.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino? Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Eve, uh, on to first reading ordinances.
And.
This item ten point, eleven point one.
An ordinance of the city amending ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-thirty-one, authorizing the expenditure of city funds exceeding one million dollars, which expenditure was proposed to not exceed the project estimate of four million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to now reflect the bid cost of nine million seven hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, which exceeds the monetary cost estimate from the ordinance twenty-twenty-two-dash-thirty-one to fund bid ITB twenty-twenty-three-dash-ten rehabilitation of lift stations one, two and three, rebid project, provided for codification conflicts and effective date. This is first reading, public services. And this is not a, oh, this is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Dean Shorizai, Deputy Public Service Director and City Engineer. That's the first reading for lift station one, two and three. So we are going to bring you the second reading and awarding the contract for the next commissioner agenda fee.
All right, thank you very much. Um, this, this is a public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak on this item? Please step up. Okay. Any discussion from the commission? All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Seconded by Commissioner Davis. Uh, we have a quorum, we can vote on it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Okay, on to second reading ordinances, uh, twelve point one, Eve.
An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter seventeen, entitled offenses miscellaneous at article four, entitled noise, amending section seventeen dash eighty, entitled definitions, section seventeen dash eighty-one, entitled unreasonably loud noise prohibited. Section seventeen dash eighty-five, entitled exemptions, to update the city code relating to unnecessary and excessive noise provided for codification, conflict severability and effective date. This is city manager and community development item.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents of the great city of.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, residents of the great city of, um, of Dana Beach. Um, as you are aware, um, this item is coming before you, um, for second reading. But from the minute that this ordinance was adopted on first reading, we began to work together, um, to amend it and to tweak it and to continue to look at ways to make it better, because that is what we do. Um, I, I wanted to, um, provide some clarity, um, and facts to perhaps some misinformation, um, that has been out there in, in the community. Any noise at any time that disturbs your quality of life, we want and expect our resident to call code department or our BSO non-emergency at any time. Safety is a top priority for us, so our goal is to not just stay status quo in what we do, but to continue to look at how we can be safer for our city, for our residents, for our employees. One of the reasons that we wanted to amend this ordinance, because having, be it code officers or BSO, go into people's homes to gauge noise is, is not a best practice, and it's not the safest thing that we could do. Um, additionally, as I have mentioned, we've continued to work on the amendment. Just yesterday morning, uh, we met with Commissioner Salvino, who proposed, um, an additional amendment to this ord- ordinance that we are presenting. So we wanted to inform you, um, and the commission that one of the key, um, tweaks that we've done to this ordinance is to create a quiet zone, a quiet time citywide, Monday through Sunday. That would mean from eleven PM to seven AM, seven days a week, any noise from anywhere that disrupts the quality of life of our residents would be a violation. People move to South Florida and to Dana Beach because they want to enjoy their backyard, their pool, time with family. We expect there to be family time outside in the pool and to have a reasonable amount of noise. What we don't expect is the quality of life of our residents to be violated. I want to also bring up at this time our deputy city manager that will provide the specifics of how we have amended, um, the ordinance. Additionally, I met again today with Commissioner Salvino, that beyond the, the Salvino amendment of the eleven PM to seven AM, he has asked for monthly report to go to him and to his colleagues, and if in six months, this is something that we have concerns about, based on your calls to us and your concerns and things that we have seen, be it BSO or police, nothing here that we pass as an ordinances in the city is in perpetuity, because we're constantly pivoting and constantly looking for your feedback and our personal assessment to continue to enhance what we do and how we do it. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to our deputy city manager to further explain the amendments of this ordinance that we're presenting for, for second reading for you today.
Before you do Candido, I just wanted to let you know that I handed out the amendment to the commission. There are other, uh, copies here so that they have it so they can read it along.
Thank you, thank you, um, city attorney. Thank you, city manager, mayor commissioners, uh, vice mayor commissioners, city residents. My name is Candido Sosa Cruz. I'm the deputy city manager. I just want to elaborate on what the manager mentioned. We're very flexible, and the reason we are reviewing this ordinance is the same reason we review all of our ordinances. We look at best practice. We look at what we currently have, and we always try to improve, make things better for our residents. This includes increasing the quality of life, and this ordinance does just that. One thing that wasn't mentioned, from the first reading to now, we, this ordinance had a seven AM until seven PM, timeframe in which people could, you know, have birthday parties, pool parties, but there was no restriction or no threshold as far as how loud sound or noise could be. Again, what we've done now in our second reading is we've eliminated those hours, and we've implemented the one-hundred-feet rule, meaning whatever, from seven AM until eleven PM, you could listen to music, you could have a birthday party, pool party, watch a football game, but that sound should not travel past one-hundred feet from your property. And during the first reading, some, some of the commissioner asked, well, how, how, what's the distance between one-hundred feet? Can we look at it? Can we measure it? And we did measure it today, and from the dais to where you see the D, that's approximately ninety feet. The D, the Dana Beach and the wall, the large D, the wall, where the Christmas tree is. So from the dais to where the D is, that's ninety feet. That, and that was measured, uh, right in front of where the mayor is, straight down. So again, we believe that this ordinance increases the quality of life for everyone, not just the people that are trying to enjoy their peace, but also the people that are trying to enjoy the quality of life in their private property and their backyards. What we don't want to do is restrict people from being outdoors and not being able to enjoy their private property, their rights, their quality of life. We believe that this is fair, it's best practice. We've taken the best components from other cities, and we've made it unique to our city. And again, to be clear, from seven AM until eleven PM, you could have, you could listen to music, you could enjoy your property with limitations. And those limitations are, sound should not travel past one-hundred feet from your property. To give you another example, an, an average prop, an aver- an average width of a, of a lot in Dana Beach is anywhere from forty to sixty feet. So you could do an average of, let's say, fifty feet. So a hundred feet would be two houses down from your house. Sound should not be heard past two houses down. And like the manager mentioned, at eleven PM, that is a quiet zone. No sound should be heard outside of your property. It does not mean you cannot have, you cannot have a party. It just means that your neighbors should not hear any sound coming from any property past eleven PM until seven AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Candido. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I was one that was asking about the widths of the homes, and I, I'm still a little confused because that's two or more homes in a distance when we talk about one-hundred feet. And while I do appreciate, you know, staff's diligence in trying to figure out how to get to yes and how to make all parties happy, that quiet zone, all, all we did was take out one thing, but the quiet zone still says one-hundred feet, so those.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
No, not the quiet zone. Outside of the quiet, it, it, it shouldn't be heard.
Between seven and eleven, it's a hundred feet. After eleven, it's not.
Correct, citywide, and I think we need to be careful. We have certain places, I'm not sure of events that we have or in the future will have, like on the beach or, um, you know, and in Dana Point, that we have to be careful of, of our own, um, ordinances. Um, and then we went from, we, we gave an additional four-hour buffer, so from, we went from seven PM to now eleven PM every day. And I'm, I'm speaking to someone with a child, and, and people who have families and lots that are smaller, that may have three homes on them, to say, you know, they can, they can have the music or whatever it is that loud until eleven PM would be an issue for me as, as someone who has a small child, and so, or, or senior community, where, where my grandmother is, you know, she, she live right by the Legion Hall, and they have parties. And to be subjected to eleven PM every night, I, I don't, I don't like that part of the ordinance. That, that's something that concerns me, and I think that we can still work on a way to compromise and get to a different, a different level of the seven to eleven part of it, and then saying that it still can't be heard one hundred, it shouldn't be heard one hundred feet away. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just, Mayor, if I could answer some of the questions from Commissioner James? Okay, the, when you mentioned Dana Point, the beach special events, that's a different process, remember? The, they will go through a special event permit that would need, uh, approval for whatever hours they're gonna be having the event. Now, as mentioned, the quiet zone is, there's no noise at all from eleven PM to seven AM. Before, from seven AM to seven PM, there was no restrictions at all. You could have a party that could be heard down the block one thousand feet from seven AM to seven PM. We've eliminated that. We have to find a balance between our residents that want to enjoy their property and our residents that want to enjoy peace. Many cities have different distances. We believe one-hundred feet puts you right outside, that's your immediate neighbor. If we lower the distance, let's say fifty feet, seventy-five feet, that's gonna be your immediate neighbor to the left, to the right, to the rear. So what that would be saying, if you're having a birthday party any time of the day, and your neighbor could hear it, it's a violation. If you're having a pool party and your neighbors could hear it, it would be a violation. We, our job as professional administrators is to bring best practices and recommend it. What we don't want to do is hurt neighbors throughout the city. There is gonna be a balance. And not everyone is gonna like it, but what we try to be is fair, transparent, have residents understand our laws, and then have our officers understand how to enforce it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, so, um, we definitely need a balance, and I, and I, and I understand maybe on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, maybe eleven PM, but through the weekday, I, to have someone, because we have, the problem is we have bad actors, we have bad neighbors, we don't have civility that, that is happening here, and this is why we are here, um, out, out of so many years and now seeking this type of ordinance. And so we're progressive city, we're moving forward, and we have to continue to change with the times. And so, um, what I would be more comfortable with, and I feel like it's a balance, is that, um, we change some of the times during the week, maybe, and then, um, on the weekends have a little bit more, um, luxury to, to be able to, I don't know, please everyone. And no one's gonna be a hundred percent pleased, and I understand that, but I think putting a good foot forward and trying to find balance between people that want to enjoy their weekends and maybe have a small gathering or something like that, or have a party. But during the week, to have someone, you know, able to blast music or have parties, especially in, in this time with, um, vacation rentals can, can definitely have a negative impact on your quality of life. Thank you.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I put a lot of thought into this because I've got a lot of phone calls from, uh, residents, and, um, and I've talked to, you know, a lot of them in regards to this, and it's, it's a tough subject. And everybody that's out there is, if you think about it, you know, we have thirty thousand people in this city, and I would say out of that situation that, you know, uh, most people get along with their neighbors. If you have a party, you get along, you're invited to the party. I think that if you probably, I think we talked, Eve, about how many complaints did we have over the last few years as far as noise complaints go?
Sure.
Because they're registered by the Broward Sheriff's Office, so.
We have thirty-five thousand residents, and we had last year in twenty-twenty-three, seven hundred and eleven noise complaints. So that's a little more than, a little less than two a day, if you think about it.
So, you know, there's gonna be, so that means everybody, probably those noise complaints probably came from a lot of times the same person. Uh, or it came from, uh, you know, somebody that lives next door to the situation where there's Airbnbs, because those are the ones that are gonna be your toughest to deal with, which is a statewide problem, which I would love to spearhead and have the residents of Dana Beach go behind it and, and try to put heavy, heavy regulations on us, because until that happens, nothing's gonna cure that, the problem with them. But, you know, I think that everybody, if you look at your neighbor and you look at what's going on and, and you feel yourself out, and you're having a party, and your kids are screaming in the pool or whatever you want to do, you know, it's just fun, you know? And I mean, if you get out of control, then you're disrespectful, you're rude, and, and that's what our deputy sheriffs are for. You call them, you call them anytime, the day or night, uh, that's what your taxpayers' dollars do. They, you call them, they don't care. They're gonna come out there, and if they feel it's out of line, they're gonna warn them, or they're gonna, or they're gonna arrest them, or they're, you know, they'll get cited the next day by code enforcement. Um, you know, we're not gonna cure this. You're not gonna cure the problem. It's, 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 you know, we can sit there and nitpick it, nitpick it, and that's why I talked to this pretty, city manager today about it. And, and I said to her, I said, you know, let's, if we're gonna go with this and it does pass, I don't know if it's gonna pass or not, it affects me. I'm a resident of Dana Beach as well as you are, and, uh, there's parties in my neighborhood all the time, but if it, if we don't like it, and we, and there's, we get a lot of calls, then we adjust it to seventy-five feet, or we adjust it to sixty feet, but you, you gotta start somewhere. And I know that after doing the discussion with the city manager and the deputy city manager, they've taken this and, and piggybacked off of a lot of the counties and, and refined it. We probably, after looking at all the other, um, after looking at all the other city codes, we probably have the best one now. I mean, you know, there's more restrictions out there in other cities. And, um, you know, it's funny because, you know, people are respectful in most cases, and I think we, we're worried about something that hasn't even happened yet. And I think when it, if we can, if our neighbors aren't nice, you know, they're just not nice, you know? And I think that most everybody's gonna get along. I'm just in favor of starting someplace in, uh, trial and error and, uh, going from there. I'm not trying to, it's gonna affect me just as much as, I'm a resident of Dana. So whatever you get, I get. I'm, I'm not getting any favors out of, I'm paid to do it. I just get, I just, I listen to the residents. I do my homework. I search. I look at other cities. I talk to the, the people that are experts at it, and I listen to staff that came in tonight and, and talked about projects, and I listen to their advice. They've been doing this for years. I'm not saying I'm right. I'm just saying that, you know, I listen, and I think that sooner or later, we have to make a choice. We have to listen to the residents, and if we get enough complaints, then we rev, you know, we amend it again, and whether it's six months or three months, it doesn't make a difference. But we have to start somewhere, and we have to trust our staff, our administration, and you can see what they're doing in our city, how well we're getting along. So my point is, is that I think if, I, I trust you. I think that we're, we can try it, and I think the residents, if you just give it a chance and let's see what happens, you know, I think that you'll find that we'll work with this, with them, and I think BSO will work with you, and I think that just, you know, don't take it personal. It's, it's, it's really a situation where I'm just, we're just trying to do what's right for all the residents combined. We got thirty-five thousand people to please, and given the good Lord didn't please them all. So, you know, just gotta think about how you can help each other as a resident, talk to your neighbors, ask them if it's too loud. And it's not gonna happen to everybody. There's gonna be, you know, out of a hundred, one's gonna really upset you. And that's how we have to fight back at that point, and that's where we hope our BSO can come in and help us out. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I just, may I add one thing, please? As, as the commissioner and the manager said, every month, we will be reporting to you, putting it on the agenda, making it transparent so residents could also see it online, the noise complaints that come in. BSO will also be adding it to their, uh, safety report when they come here, and the line item will be noise complaints every month. As Commissioner Salvino said, if we want to revisit it in three months or six months and make a change, we are flexible. We will pivot, we will shift, and make any change necessary. And as Salvino said, Commissioner Salvino said, allow us to start with this ordinance that we believe is a fair, balanced ordinance that will increase the quality of life in our city for everyone.
Thank you, Candido. Well said. Uh, Commissioner Davis, uh, you have your comments, and I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Yes, um, very quickly, um, before the public comments, I do want to thank our staff, and I want to thank our administration for, you know, trying to find that balance. I know how hard you guys worked to, um, come to a place where we can find that balance that we've, that we've spoken of, and I, and I do appreciate that. Um, however, I do believe noise is personal. I think it's personal to people's quality of life. It certainly is personal to me, and when you pass an ordinance that, you know, affects all of the residents, it also affects me. Um, I did do my due diligence as I do, uh, within my neighborhood and going to some of the residents who contacted me to just look at what those, um, what that, what the, what that hundred feet would look like, um, just. Um, just doing my own walk in between homes, and between certain homes, there was only fifteen feet between one house to the next house. And so if my neighbor to the left of me or my neighbor to the right of me was having a big, huge, loud party, you know, do I, should I have to be two houses down in order for me to hear that? Um, that, that, that doesn't sit well with me, it just doesn't sit well with my quality of life. I'm a doctoral student, I'm in, I, I need my peace and quiet to do my homework, to enjoy my life the way that I need to enjoy it. And people, and the lady whose house that I went to, she was a ninety-six-year-old woman, um, you know, and, and it wasn't, and, and, you know, God forbid, people who have children with, they have to go to school the next morning, so that eleven PM is not really a good, quiet time for somebody who has children or for elderly people. So I'm just really concerned about, um, the timeframe, and I do wanna work on a balance, but right now, I, I don't feel that that gets me there, because I've actually walked the walk of seeing what that distance looks like and feels like when it's somebody who's right next to you. So, uh, that's where I'm sitting right now, and I look forward to hearing the public comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, if I could just ask one question, please. Is there a distance or a time that you feel comfortable with?
Um, I, I, I would, I would wanna reduce it to fifty, um, and to see how that would look, and, and give me reports on that. I think the majority of people, I really do believe the majority of people are good, kind neighbors. I believe if you go to your neighbor and you say, hey, this is too loud, the majority of people will, will say, okay, I'll turn that down for you. Um, but if you give them, uh, if you implement an ordinance that has this hundred feet within it, then people will say, well, you can't tell them anything, this is what the ordinance says. But I think that the majority of people right now would do, uh, what, what, what good neighbors do. But then you do, uh, like Commissioner James said, you have, you're gonna have some bad actors no matter what. Do I think the majority of Dania Beach residents are like that? Absolutely not. But I do think that if you give somebody a carte blanche to, to violate, you know, a certain amount of feet, then, then they might do that, and, um, it's my concern that, that we protect our seniors and that we protect the children who have to go to school the next morning. And I'm just not sure that that would, that, that would do it. Eleven o'clock at night is, 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 is late, uh, for me, uh, for seniors, for children. Um, so, I, I would do, I, I would be comfortable with fifty feet. Um, and that's what, what I would be comfortable with right now, maybe ten o'clock. But I, I would like to, I just feel that the eleven o'clock is too late, and a hundred feet is, is too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Okay, uh, I'm gonna open up the public comment, we have a few public comments here, uh, you know, several. So, uh, I'd like to put that two and a half minutes and avoid redundancy as much as possible. Yeah, we'll do two minutes, if, if we need to extend it a little, I, I could, I could do that. Just when you get to one minute. So, please, uh, I'll call up first Bobby H. Grace. Ms. Grace, please come on up. Name and address, please.
Oh, I know how to do it. It's Bobby H. Grace, one-ten Northwest Eighth Avenue in the great city of Dania Beach, Florida. I want to be all seven hundred of those people that called in and said that they hated the noise and the parties that happened. I'll take the blame for that, because if I could call in all seven hundred of them, I would do it. It took me twenty years to get my neighborhood to where it is today. I'm disappointed in you even considering what you're considering, because the quality of life that we've worked so hard for is being challenged at this point. I don't like it. I've worked hard to get my neighborhood where it is. Every section of the city of Dania Beach is my neighbor. We all feel it when there is a loud party in our residence. You talk about BSO coming out and, and shutting them down, you talk about code enforcement. I can't even get BSO to shut them down by the pool right there by my house that they play it all weekend. And now they got psychedelic lights up, and they've got music going, and they're sitting out there and they're gambling, and they're smoking, and they're doing drugs, and the police got blinders on, and they got earplugs on, and they don't see it, and they ride by like it's nothing. I don't like it. I don't like when we have people coming into our neighborhoods, renting houses and having parties and disrupting our lives. We have children that go to Collins Elementary in my community, we have senior citizens in my community. You're talking about eleven o'clock, I go to bed at nine o'clock. I should be in bed right now, okay, but I have to come up here because I feel like you're threatening the whole community of the city of Dania Beach, the thirty thousand one hundred and ninety-nine residents. I'm pleading with you and I'm begging you, don't do this to us. We pay your salaries, we're taxpayers, and we need you to voice our concerns through the commission and through the people that are supposed to be helping us and representing us, and make sure that these people that are supposed to be probably servants in the city of Dania Beach do their damn jobs.
Thank you. I know. Thank you, Bobby. Uh, next up, Andre Deswivit, I'm sorry. Deserou.
Deserou. My name is Andre Deserou, I'm at three oh six Southeast Third Street. I have two Airbnb next to me. My wife and I bought the house in nineteen ninety, so we've seen people go and come as, over the years. The Airbnb is, to me, is the worst problem. I had scream at people at two-thirty in the morning because they're playing a ball in the backyard, and they're screaming, and everybody's drunk. So I had to, you know, and it went on for several days in a row. I'm worried about the hundred feet, because they're right next to me, I don't have a hundred feet. So what if that happened again? And if you cannot hear them a hundred feet from my house, what option do I have? I think it's a dangerous option, because then you end up confronting the people. You, you tell them to stop the music, so you have to go to bed, you have to wake up in the morning. And that's the biggest problem that I have with the hundred feet situation. I like the hour, the eleven o'clock on the weekend especially, I'm fine with that, you know, I can live with that. But during the week, it's, it's hard, and the hundred feet is, for me, is a problem. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Up next, we have Rhonda Bachman. Rhonda, please, uh, come up, state your name and address.
My name's Rhonda Bachman, and I live at three oh six Southeast Third Street with that guy, and I did not take his last name because it's so hard to pronounce. So, um, again, the idea of, I think the Airbnbs is really what's getting a lot of us a little worried. And so if Airbnbs are a part of our life now, thanks to our state, um, and it may be a continuing and maybe even increasing situation, then fortifying our noise ordinance instead of lightening it seems a more reasonable move to me. So I don't wanna change from our property line. I'd like that to continue to be. My property line, my bedroom is five feet from my property line, and the Airbnb is right across that fence. So I'm looking for the hundred feet to not be put in place. You can take out the in-house situation if we don't want our police in any sort of danger by coming to our house. Take it out, that's okay. Um, but I think that we should definitely not be lightening our noise ordinance at this point. We should be fortifying it as much as we possibly can. So I appreciate it. Uh, Commissioner Davis and James, thank you for your no vote previously. Hoping the other of you will go to no votes. Um, and we really do appreciate all the work and energy that you're spending on this issue. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Gerald Campbell. Gerald, please state your name and address, sir.
Mike Check. My name is Gerald Campbell of eleven eighteen Southeast Sixth Avenue, Dania Beach, Florida. I'm the owner of a technology company called Nova Sound. I have a BS in physics and recording arts. I'm a certified Pro Tools two-ten audio operator. I'm adjunct professor at Florida International University, and I'm an audio specialist. So to sum that up, I'm an audio expert. I'm here to inform and educate the Dania Beat, Dania Beach elected officials and Dania residents that propose changes to the noise ordinance to read, leading the property line and asking for the noise to be measured plainly audible at a distance of a hundred feet within a residential community is a flawed process and inaccurate, and an inaccurate method for making a determination of plainly audible noise in a residential area, okay? The standard distance, how the professionals actually measure loudness is from about three feet, okay? So a hundred feet sounds rather arbitrary, right? So we would only measure something that loud if it was enormous, like an airplane. Why? Because it would rush your eardrums and potentially your organs. So noise decreases as the distance from the source increases. So two words I wanna familiarize everyone with is diffraction and reflection, okay? Sound is sent in every direction, so if I were to shout in this room, and particularly, this room is sound-treated. That behind you and that above us is gonna absorb some of the sound. Our neighborhoods are not treated in the same way. So just for full transparency, when I first moved down here, I made a lot of noise. I'm a sound man, but I quickly learned that because of our elderly population, that's pretty unacceptable. The sound in the environment is absorbed and obstructed by things like air conditioners, fences, landscapes, and residential concrete walls. So when you go past a hundred feet, or when you get to a hundred feet, you're not really getting an accurate picture of what's happening within that radius or the perimeter, either one from the source of the sound. You also have to calculate from the direction of the sound and where the audio is actually coming from. So I'll give you a perfect example. Okay, I'll give you a perfect example. If the speakers are in the rear of your house and the sound is being amplified from the back of your house, you can't possibly measure it from a hundred feet from the front of your house, right? Um, at a hundred feet, it's nearly impossible to, to measure loud, loudness, or how it could affect somebody's bedroom or patio twenty feet away from the source. Okay, so if anyone needs any additional information, I, I wouldn't mind giving a presentation as long as the Dania Beach residents had access to it, I would, I would say a hundred feet is rather extreme and arbitrary.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, up next, we have Donald Koning. Koning? Mr. Koning, please, uh, state your name and address.
My name is Ronald Koning, I live at three-six-zero Southeast Sixth Street, Dania Beach. And I fall under every one of these categories. I go to work every day. I lived in Dania Beach for twenty-something years. Matter of fact, I'm born and raised in this state seventy-three years ago. There's no way that a hundred feet even comes even close, close to what I have. I'm three hundred feet. And if I tell you honestly, under oath, however you'd like it, at five o'clock in the morning, I can hear them three hundred feet away. And I go to bed at eight-thirty. So when she says fifty feet, you say ninety feet, I'm talking almost three and a half houses away. I can hear the conversation of the drunks. When it comes to the parties, I would be more than glad to pay for the parties for the children. They deserve the parties, they're kids. Kids aren't up at nine o'clock at night swimming in the pool, making noise, they're not. I am the senior citizen that has to put up with this. I live in this city, I hope you all understand, do you live in this city and have to hear it? It's important to me, to my wife, to my neighbors that are, my neighbors are good. You do have one bad apple in the bunch. Why does it have to be every weekend at five o'clock in the afternoon till five-thirty Sunday morning, because they have to get up and leave or go somewhere? I have to stay there. I'm the one that has to pay for this. With that, if you think fifty feet is good, a hundred feet is good, they're talking on Third Street. I live on Sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koning. All right, up next, we have, uh, Denise, Denise, Denise Koning? Okay, come on, Denise, let's, let's, let's knock out husband and wife. Yeah, exactly.
Hi, I'm Denise Koning.
Denise, please state your name and address.
Three-six-zero Southeast Sixth Street. So it's the same than what he said, we hear noise all the time, weekend, and it's not fun. It's, it could be at five-thirty the morning, it could be at eleven-thirty. It's no specific time, it's just noise and music. And it's not pleasant. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. No. Just, let's, let's get through it, let's do the, the comments. Okay, uh, next, we have Bob Adams. Mr. Adams, please come up, state your name and address.
Thank you, Bob Adams, three-three Southeast Third Terrace. Uh, the gentleman that just spoke, I think the noisemaker on Third Avenue lives across the alley from me. A few months back, it was three o'clock in the morning. I go bang on the door, nobody answers, because they're all out in the yard drunk and making a lot of noise. And at the same time, as I walked away from their house, some guy in a van opens the door and asks if I party. If you know what he meant by that, I'm not gonna repeat to you what I said to him, anyway. Um, yes, I believe a hundred, believe a hundred feet is too much. I believe eleven PM is too late. But I, I wanna make sure I'm clear on one thing. The proposed ordinance says nothing beyond a hundred feet between seven AM and eleven PM. And between eleven PM and seven AM, nothing outside at all. Did I hear that correctly? I think that's all cumbersome. Set a time, this is it. If you wanna make a lot of noise and nobody hears off the edge of your property, who cares? Set a time, hopefully no later than ten PM, where noise can't be heard fifty feet off your property. If somehow you wanna make noise in the middle of the night and nobody can hear it off your property, doesn't matter. So I, I think we're at a good start. The big problem is one we can do nothing about, and that's Airbnb, thanks to the legislature, since they really have got a home rule. Unfortunately, you can't do anything about that, and everybody needs to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, uh, up next, we have Derek Hankerson, since you're already up, come on up, sir. Say your name and address.
Derek Hankerson, seven forty-six Southwest Third Street, Dania Beach. There's something that we haven't discussed tonight that's in the new ordinance that I encourage you not to throw away. That is deterring repeat offenders with a fine. It was proposed that there is a five-hundred-dollar fine once an individual calls BSO, they come out, ask the offender to turn down the noise, they do so for fifteen minutes. So you call them again, and they come back out. This time, they'll leave it down for half an hour, and they turn it back up. My next-door neighbor did this with, our last call was registered at one-forty in the morning on a Wednesday night. We need something with teeth to prevent the bad actors from just re- We need something with teeth to prevent the bad actors from just repeating this over and over, because right now enforcement has nothing they can really do to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Up next, Mr. DeRosa, Sean DeRosa, please come up, state your name and address.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast Fifth Street. Thank you. Regarding our noise ordinance, Dania residents are being misled and deceived. City staff is saying they have to change the noise ordinance so the police and staff do not have to go inside our home for their safety. Dania residents agree with you. We do not want you inside our homes either. Those are four easy words that can be deleted. However, Dania residents also agree noise can be heard from within our property line markers that have been standard and have been precedent for many years. Dania residents want our property line markers regarding noise preserved, protected, and left alone. Staff is also telling residents the noise ordinance has to be changed so children can play in the backyard pool. That again is deceptive, misleading nonsense. Children playing in the pool can easily be placed as an exemption within our noise ordinance. This is, and has always been, about loud music noise and loud partying crossing over our property lines to impact our right to the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of our homes, including our attached patios. Dania city staff should not be careless and recklessly delete our property line paragraph and the words plainly audible noise coming across your property line as the standard threshold to be able to ask for help bringing a noisy property into compliance. It's been a long-term precedent for Dania residents that our four property lines, our two interior side property lines, our rear and our front, are our primary standard markers for our right to the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of our homes, including our attached patios, and also including being able to open the windows and enjoy the fresh air outside. Now you want to recklessly delete our property lines as our standard marker and replace that with the plainly audible noise crossing our property lines has to be plainly audible at 100 feet away for the police and city staff to hear for a valid noise complaint to be filed. That leaves a lot of room for human error and human opinion.
Go ahead, you can finish, I'll give you 15 more seconds.
It will be extremely difficult to hear noise 100 feet away that is plainly audible with all the residential barriers. And remember, Dania residents and elected officials, the noise has to be plainly audible at 100 feet, not partially audible, not barely audible, not slightly audible, not faintly audible, not heard very low, has to be heard plainly audible at 100 feet. That does not make any sense? It's an unrealistic, flawed, flawed noise policy you're trying to adopt.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. DeRosa.
May I ask if there's residents that are willing to give up their time so I can finish, please?
No.
No? Why is that?
Because I'm the chairman of this meeting. Thank you. All right, can I have Carol Stock Rocky, please come up? Please state your name and address. Carol Stock Rocky? Okay, Ray Lair? Lair. Ray Lair.
Ray.
Oh, okay, okay.
I lived in Malaluka Gardens for 45 years, and as you all know, Malaluka Gardens fought like hell against the airport expansion. Not the pavement of expansion, the noise expansion. And guess what? We pretty much won. Anything over 65 DNL, we got mitigated for. So I make a proposal, instead of 100 feet, 50 feet, 10 feet, make it a decibel level. Nothing over 65 decibels is allowed in Dania Beach. When you have the meeting here tonight, we were monitoring the noise. It's 65, maybe 80. So that would be a way to do it, because 100 feet is nothing, really, when it comes to noise. And the noise ordinance should start earlier in the evening. I'm old, I go to bed early. Even on New Year's Eve, my neighbors set off fireworks and they know the ordinance is to 11:00. I'm sitting there, I can't wait till 11:00 so I can go to sleep. I'm a big party girl. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Don't party too hard now. Okay, next we have Betty Sokol.
I live at 609 Northwest 10th Street, Dania Beach, Florida, Malaluka Gardens. I've been here a long time, I was a cops program, and I want to know what happened to... Oh, thank you. What happened to code? We have all kinds of boats in driveways, trailers in driveways, one was even in one of our neighbor's driveways. And that was you. A boat in your driveway, but it was a small boat. But I live on 10th Street. There's an alley right behind my house, then there's a house, and then the next house has a swimming pool. They were playing the music so loud that I couldn't even... My son-in-law couldn't hear me. I heard, "Please turn the music down." They turned it up. So I got on the phone, called BSO, and we have an ordinance already, we already have one. And they come over, and the people turned it down, and haven't heard them since. I don't mind them having a party in a pool. I have a pool, but you don't turn your music up so you can't talk to your neighbor next door sitting beside you. So I hope you do the right thing for all of the Dania residents and property owners.
Thank you, Betty. Um, no, come on.
I go to bed early, too. I'm in bed by 8:00.
All right, all right.
It's a competition, you go to bed the earliest.
Who's up next? Christopher Johnston, please.
I think we end our commission meetings...
Please say your name and address, sir.
It's Christopher Johnston, 745 Northwest 12th Avenue, Dania Beach. Okay, I may need a representative from BSO to come down here, and give me some information on what they would use for the metric to determine what the decibel level is. Do they not have a decibel meter that they can measure an automobile or motorcycle?
Sir, we're not doing it by decibel, that's...
Well, I know you're not, you should be. You're using the wrong... You're using a faulty metric system. You've already been told that. You need something that is not so subjective, you need something that's objective. You need to talk to this gentleman here, a specialist that is familiar with acoustic engineering and can give you some informed ideas on what you should be using to determine the sound levels. Sound level's going to be different with wind. If you're downwind, you're going to be exposed to more sound from that direction. Same thing with the temperature. Temperature's lower, you're going to have higher perceived sound level. Officer shows up, what's he got? Does he have a meter where he can take the decibel reading? He should. Anyone that has an iPhone or an Android phone, you can download an app to give you a decibel reading. And you can buy Bluetooth microphones that are specifically designed for that. Another brainstorming idea, I don't know what Dania has, Fort Lauderdale has, where they can locate gunshots fired from various locations. They can triangulate, find that out. I don't know if that's feasible or not for Dania. They could have a system that could triangulate right in and locate the offending persons or persons that are making all this loud noise. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Okay, last but not least, we have Brenda Lee Cauliflower Shalafour.
Would much rather be collecting toys for Tots, or working with Make-A-Wish. Brenda Shalafour, 814 Northwest 10th Avenue, between, as you know, your sister and your uncle. Not too far from my good neighbor there, Paco. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to read the memo I sent you. Trying to get you to a consensus, that's the way it should be. For whatever it's worth, I want you to know I've done my homework on this item. I reviewed the materials prepared by your staff, as well as the city-paid outside council. Quite frankly, some of the assertions are very concerning. It's important to note, the city-paid outside council's report does not address the property line versus 100 feet. I don't recall that the report addresses subjective versus objective. It talked more about going inside a domicile. The notion that you're moving from a subjective to an objective standard is at best misleading. A human being is assessing the noise, whether it be at the property line or an arbitrary number of feet, it will be subjective, period. An objective standard requires verifiable information on facts and evidence. That's what this gentleman told you, that's what Captain Johnston just told you as it relates to a decibel meter. Facts, evidence. No matter how far away or how close, it is a subjective standard, not objective.
You can finish, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Thank you. So again, it's what a reasonable person believes is the standard, hence the reason for courts and juries, because we can disagree. But you're not going to an objective standard. Stop telling people that's what you're doing. Staff also indicates in their note to you that 100 feet distance protects the neighborhood. Well, then therefore, property line protects the homeowner. Consider it two-tiered process. Protect the homeowner at my property line, protect the neighborhood at 100 feet, go out 300 feet, protect the city of Dania Beach. But don't mislead by making misrepresentations of fact. You've got a page of exemptions. You want to take care of babies playing in a pool? Put it in there. Item F, noise emanating from unamplified conversations of persons.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. You can wrap it up, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I thank you all for enduring. This is not rocket science, as I pointed out to you, and you've got an awful lot of smart people to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Deputy Manager Candido Salzak Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to the residents that took the time to come out and express their opinions, but I also want to clarify some statements that were made. When they mention staff, trying to take away property rights or any type of rights, it's the complete opposite. Our staff is composed of professionals, and everything we do is to protect residents' property rights, business property rights, and to increase the quality of life of all the residents. What we've heard tonight is a select few that came out here, took the time, and expressed their opinion. There are others that have different opinions, as originally...
Hey, hey, hey! No? Sir, sir, please sit down and be quiet. Mr. DeRosa, this is a warning. Mr. DeRosa, this is a warning.
If you have any public workshops...
All right, please take Mr. DeRosa out.
No, you didn't.
Take Mr. DeRosa out of City Hall, please. Please escort him out.
Thank you, Mayor. And as I was trying to say, as we originally stated, we are very flexible, and we are ready to adjust, to shift, to pivot, to do what the commission thinks is right with the information collected today. If the commission believes a different distance, we are ready to enforce that and implement it. If you believe different times, what we're trying to do is have a conversation, again, to increase the quality of life of all the residents in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Candido. Any comment? Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Sure. I wanted to wait and hear what everybody had to say, but I, one, I do want to thank the residents for being very thoughtful and being very patient tonight, and having the patience to wait to come up and speak and give us your opinions. I also want to thank Commissioner Salvino, because I think that... Don't look at me like that. Because I think that your suggestions are very thoughtful and very reasonable for what is being discussed here tonight, and I think they do help overall. What I'm going to say, I've been talking to a lot of residents over the last couple of weeks, and I have been doing my own research, and I have been asking for documentation and other evidence that I can use in order to explain to people what this is about. Several of the people that I've spoken with are in this room, in fact, but there have been many others as well that I've spoken with on the phone, in person, via text, via email. We did receive a number of emails, I received a number of emails, and texts from people who actually think that this is a very good law, and feel that this is a very good ordinance and that it does what it is supposed to do. And as Mr. Hanker said earlier, this law has teeth. You could actually enforce it, and there's actually a penalty for what is complained about. Part of the problem that we have, and that what I heard from a number of people that I did speak with, was when I asked them, "When is the last time that you complained about noise in your neighborhood? When is the last time that you complained about noise within 100 feet of your home?" And they generally told me, "I don't. If I hear noise, I wait for it to pass, it generally passes, and I don't complain." If it's a party or something like that that's going on, that's happening on a regular basis, as I know does occur, I have an Airbnb two doors down from me, so there are parties there all the time, and I have called the non-emergency number when there has been... The main reason was, there was one time at 2:00 in the morning and there were children screaming. That was concerning to me. So I called the non-emergency number and they came out, and the volume went down. But most times, if you have something like that, if you pick up the phone and you call, our BSO goes out, and they will take care of the situation. And now we have an ordinance that says that if they have to come back out again, that these individuals are going to get fired, are going to get cited, they're going to get fined. And they keep doing it, the more they do it, the higher the fines go. So this is an ordinance that has some teeth. This is an ordinance that is reasonable. No ordinance is going to make everybody happy. It's just not going to happen. It's a problem in every city. We are not in Minnesota, where you are in your home half of the year. We live in South Florida. People live outside. They like to spend time outside. They like to have people over. They have their children over. They have children there, they have their grandchildren over, playing in the pool, and they make noise. I mean, if that... I mean, if you limit the feet to fifty feet, you're going to end up having people who maybe don't like their neighbor who pick up the phone and call because grandchildren are in the pool having a good time. That becomes a problem. These, the seven hundred and some calls that were made over the last year, we do know that a number of them did come from one resident. And in fact, that same resident, those are the emails that he sent to the city complaining about the noise and complaining about his neighbors. One resident. Okay? So if we take things as they are and realize that we do live in South Florida and people do live and they do live outside, I think this is a step in the right direction, especially given the fact that we can continue to monitor this and we will continue to monitor this, as you've been told by everybody here, they're going to be bringing it for it every meeting so that we can hear how many noise complaints there were, what the issues are. Maybe we can even find out if they're all coming from the same phone number because that seems to happen quite a bit. The same people tend to complain over and over again. And, ah, no, 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 nope. Public comments closed. So this is something, it's a step in the right direction to try to at least have something that we can enforce and something that we can try to make people's lives better. If it doesn't, then we can come back and revisit it again in six months and see what's going on at that point. And there's nothing wrong with doing that. We do it all the time. Whenever we see things that happen. We had a whole situation a couple of years ago with the oak trees and I had it monitored. I was watching and seeing what the complaints were. It didn't make a difference. Nothing changed. And if people aren't calling to complain, it's not going to make a difference anyway. So if you do have a problem, call and complain. And then we can at least have people, we can at least have the people who are causing the problem cited. So again, I want to thank Commissioner Salvino for adding the additional points which I think are very effective. And I want to thank our city staff for spending as much time as they did trying to put this together and trying to work with the community and do what's best for the city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know City Attorney Bootsis would like to add something.
Good evening. I've listened to everyone. I appreciate everybody's comments. I just wanted to bring something to your attention as the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Salvino has made a recommendation and if it goes forward, the recommendation about the quiet zone, which would involve the property line. So that property line definition would be, remain in the code. I want you to understand that this did not come up in a vacuum. There has been a resident who has complained about noise and was not satisfied with how the ordinance was being administered. And we did hire somebody outside, outside council. But since the outside council, still, the resident has not been satisfied with the response saying that BSO is not doing their job. And it's not that they're not doing their job, they're not interpreting the code the way this resident is. And as such, we're trying to clarify the code to make sure that there are no more problems, that it is something easily administered. And everybody's talking about a hundred feet as being a long distance. But there was a resident who was in the, right at this big D sign and when her name was called, everybody could hear it. That would have been a violation under the new ordinance. So I think we need to understand the concept of what we're talking about here. Additionally, just to address the issue of sound decibel meters, that's a problem in and of itself. It doesn't register all the different types of sound is one. Two, it's challengeable, often challenged because of the need to calibrate the equipment, the regularity of calibrating the equipment, the knowledge of the code officers. It comes down to a lot of enforcement with no action. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it is a problem in those cities that have it. I've adopted it in other cities and that has been a problem during the enforcement process. So on that note, whatever you decide to do, do it. I just wanted to give you that additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, I wanted to make, I was going to make a motion, so I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything, Mayor, before I make my motion. I know we haven't heard you speak yet.
Yeah, I'll touch on this.
Okay, and then, and then gently touch on it.
Okay, so let's, there's a lot that was addressed. And I hear the public's comments regarding this and I sympathize with you, okay? No one wants to not peacefully enjoy their home. No one wants to be woken up in the middle of the night by unreasonably loud noise, you know, for whatever reason. It's not just music. It could be machinery, equipment. It could be, you know, somebody mowing their lawn in the middle of the night. You can't do that. So what we had before was, it was the property line, okay? But it was hard to be enforceable with our, with our code officers and with BSO, okay? And what this hundred feet does is it gives them a measurement to enforce the code, okay? It's not perfect. It's not going to be perfect. But we've read thirty or forty code ordinances, you know, throughout the state and throughout South Florida to come to this. So obviously, it's not perfect. There's no, oh, look what this city's doing. It's a perfect noise ordinance. So it's, it's, it's difficult, okay? When you talk about decibels, I understand that's how you measure noise, okay? So let's say point six five decibels, all right? So that's our measuring thing, measuring threshold, all right? So somebody could say, "I'll just keep my music at point six four and I'll never cross the threshold." Whereas opposed, if you have this hundred feet, the officer standing a hundred feet away from the house and says, "Okay, I could hear it. It's playing the audible." They're in violation, okay? And first and foremost, let me explain this also. It's, you want to be a good neighbor. If you have a bad neighbor, it's a nightmare, okay? I, I, I'm a realtor myself. I always say, if you have a horrible neighbor, your million-dollar house goes down to four hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's, it's very difficult, okay? I have children, okay? I have two small children. I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old at home. They're sleeping right now, okay? So I want them to peacefully enjoy their home as well, okay? And I also want them to have a good time in their backyard and play, okay? So what you do is, if I'm having a party, I go to my neighbors. I say, "Hey, I'm having a party. You want to come over? If it's too loud, then let me know and I'll turn it down, okay?" And that's usually how it's done with normal people, okay? And instead, I know everybody lives in a different area, okay? And everybody has different neighbors. And like I said, there's, Airbnb is a big problem. And I heard the Airbnb issues, okay? But that's a separate, it's not, it's not so much as a separate issue because noise comes with Airbnb, but there's trash uses with Airbnb, there's enforcement and, you know, Dania Beach is one of... I'd say we tackled the ordinances for Airbnb before the state preempted us, okay? So we are actually one of the best cities when it comes to Airbnb, you know? Give, take that for what it, what it's worth, all right? But there's violators and there's always going to be violators, okay? So yes, this was created to protect our code officers who are unarmed to go inside of somebody's house, okay? So somebody's going to call their house, like someone who's just got kicked out of the commission chambers and they're going to say, "Come to my house, come to my house," you know? It's very unsafe. It's very unsafe. And no one wants them in their house anyways. Same thing with BSO. So this makes it, it streamlines the process. It does make it, I understand exactly what you mean, ma'am, of being subjective. It's basically overall subjective, but it gives us a parameter to make it enforceable. That's why we are doing this, okay? And for being a city of almost forty thousand people, to get seven hundred complaints, you know, and like, let's be honest, seven hundred complaints, not seven hundred people. It's probably like less than two hundred people, a hundred people complaining. So I'd say we're doing pretty good overall as a city. And I want, I, we're not taking away anybody's property rights. We're not taking away your ability to complain or to file a complaint. You always can. You always can. And the fact that we moved it to eleven o'clock, zero noise, leaving your property line, I agree with that. And when I talk to residents, that's what most of them thought it was in the first place. Well, exactly. Most people thought it was ten, eleven. I'm just saying, that's what people think. They're like, "Okay, I can't be loud after a certain time at night." And that's how most residents interpret. They're not going and reading our laws and our ordinances regarding noise. So this makes it easier for the residents to understand, makes it easier for code enforcement and BSO to understand. And it's a living, breathing document, okay? We can change it if we have to, but this is better than it was before, okay? If you ask me, that's my opinion. It's better than it was before. And the fact that we have staff and city council that reviews this and spends so much time on this, you know, understanding everybody's sensitivities to this subject, I'm very grateful, very grateful to even have a city that listens as much as we do. You know, whether it be one person or a hundred people or five thousand people. We listen to you and we're trying to do the best we can. And like Candido said, this is probably going to be one of the best noise ordinances in the county, if not South Florida. You know, after, because we've looked at them all pretty much, all right? And we've taken the best pieces that we can. So this makes it better. It's not a perfect world, all right? You know, everybody, you know, love your neighbor as you love yourself, okay? And so let's just see where this goes, okay? That's what I'm saying. Let's see where this goes. I think it's an improvement. It could always be changed in the future. But it's a good start and countless hours have been put just into this, okay? Years and years of complaints and just a lot, a lot of paperwork, a lot of, a lot of different parties that we've had to approach. And it, we got to this point and this is where we are, okay? That's, that's what I'm stating. So I think it's an improvement from what it was. It's safer for the residents, safer for code officers and BSO, and it makes it more enforceable, okay? Thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to make a motion. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, someone else can make a motion. I do think that we owe it to our residents to try and do something in the favor of all of the comments that we've heard. I haven't heard one person come down here and stay till almost eleven o'clock at night saying that they love our noise ordinance. And so I am going to go with the amount of people that have come here, the amount of people I've spoken with and what I deal with personally as well. I know that, you know, Sean is very passionate and unfortunately, he could not have control of his emotions. But we have people in this, in this room that we haven't heard from before that are in different parts of our city. And so it's not just a one-resident thing. It affects all of us. So for my motion, and we can still come back and we're going to still hear if it's working or not working and we can always adjust it, I want to amend, what is this, twelve point two? No, twelve point one, Lord Jesus. Twelve point one to the times during the weekdays to be at nine o'clock and on the weekends, that's Friday and Saturday night at eleven. And I want to try the fifty feet. If the fifty feet doesn't work, then we can't say that we tried to listen to the residents and it did not work. And so we're going to go, we're going to default back to what we were doing. So that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner James to approve, approve the item, but with fifty feet and the hours of nine o'clock during the weekdays and eleven o'clock on the weekends, correct? Those are three changes. All right, and I have a second from Commissioner Joyce Davis.
One further clarification. It's taking Commissioner Salvino's language and changing the eleven to the nine or the eleven on the weekends, correct?
I don't know what language you're talking about.
Yeah.
The language for the quiet zone.
It's the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Salvino amendment.
The Salvino amendment. Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a, I have a motion and a second. Laura, please call a vote to this on roll. Davis.
And the fifty feet, right?
And the fifty, yes, and fifty feet, correct.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino? Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
Mayor, the motion fails three to two.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as is.
Without the Salvino amendment or...
I don't know, with the Salvino amendment. I'm sorry.
No, it's a good amendment.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Llewellyn to approve the item with the Salvino amendment. And I have a second from Commissioner Salvino. All right, Laura, let's call roll again.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner James?
No.
Commissioner Salvino? Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Me. It's always me. Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries three to two.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We will be monitoring this and we'll have updates. All right, if you're, if you're, if you're leaving, please leave quietly. We still are conducting business here. Thank you very much. All right, on to item twelve point two. Please, Eve.
An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter two of the city code entitled Administration, Article Five entitled Reserved by amending Section two dash one oh one entitled Naming of City-owned Facilities to Modify the Background Check Criteria of the Code, Providing for Conflict Solubility and Effective Date.
Hey, hey, please, order, order, order here. We're conducting business, guys, okay? You're being noisy. Yeah.
So the only amendment to the ordinance here for the naming of facilities is to remove the requirement for the level-two background check by the FBI of fingerprints. They won't do it for this purpose. So that's the only amendment. We ask that you pass the ordinance.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on item twelve point two? I don't see anyone. Vice, Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Salvino. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we can move on to discussion and possible action. This is item thirteen point one. It's a discussion and presentation by Island Syndicate for a commemorative publication and visioning process. This is by Commissioner Davis and the city manager and marketing. Commissioner Davis, you are on.
Good evening and thank you for staying with us to this late hour. I did not know it was going to be till eleven o'clock in the evening, but you know, we do what we have to do when it's worth it. This particular project came about several months ago with the, I guess, the introduction to Island Syndicate back at the Tourism Luncheon with Visit Lauderdale. I was introduced to David and I was very impressed with the organization. As such, I introduced them per the protocol to the city manager and we all had a great team meeting. And during our team meeting, we had a wonderful discussion about having a hundred and twentieth commemorative book celebration, a keepsake book that would go in perpetuity for documenting the history, the past, the present and the future of Dania Beach. And in so doing, I was able to put that item on the budget and have that budget item approved. And we are now here because there were some additional questions that had to, that the commission had about the process, about the planning, about how this process was going to go forward. This is a time-sensitive project, so if you would look, you know, the backup is in here. I think we were almost a couple, almost over a month behind in what we were planning to do. But at the end of the day, I just want to introduce this amazing group here. I don't know if the city manager wants to say something now or in the back end, however you want to talk about it. But they are here to do their presentation and answer any questions that you may have about the keepsake commemorative book for the hundred and twentieth anniversary.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I definitely agree with you. We have a fantastic team of individuals representing this company. We have seen their work and we look forward to working with them and getting guidance from your colleagues in regards to the amount that we want to invest because we all think that it's a great investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Muir. I'm here with my business partner. Her name is Kalib Thompson. And we represent Island Syndicate. It's a Broward County-based business. And we are in the business of doing lots of content creation, particularly for municipalities. So we do for other cities, we do for the county. And I believe that Commissioner Davis, who I had given some of our material, has shown some of the work in the last commission meeting. At this point in time, we just want to work to get clarification as to how to best deliver the work that we can do for the city. deliver the work that we can do for the city with understanding what it is that you want. And so in order to get to that desired final product, we want to have this discussion this evening. I'm gonna invite my business partner Kalib to bring forth some of the comments we think are most important for you to hear so that we can make some decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kalib Thompson. As David shared, um, we are, or we would like to present, uh, a lovely hundred and twentieth anniversary keepsake book to the city of Dania Beach. Our process is that we typically will work with the city to gather your information together. It takes us anywhere from three months to six months depending on what we're doing. And we, um, pull together the, the most important things that, uh, the council, the, the, the commission agrees is the most important. The stakeholders that we've been told are, are gonna be part of this process. Um, we want to understand the most important things that you want to include and then we have to break that down into something that is both beautiful and engaging and well-written and palatable. And as a keepsake, um, we've, we've seen another history book that is, is really a history book. Um, ours becomes a keepsake and something that every time you look through it, you feel proud of the city. You, uh, wanna share it with friends and family. It becomes something that you share with your children and uh, people take as a, a tour- tourism piece away from here. Um, and that's what we want to work with you to create. So you've all seen the one that we did for Miami Gardens, I believe. We have elements in here, including it's very vibrantly colored. We, we make it big so that it has great presence. We use lots of large photos in there. When you are flipping through, whether you kind of just flip through to look at the pictures or you're actually reading, you're kind of getting the feeling of the story that's being told. And that's how we want to, to create this piece for you. Uh, so I know in the last meeting, there was a question about, uh, how many pages would be required to tell this story. We started off with Miami Gardens with, uh, them asking for forty-eight pages. We had to kind of fight to get it to sixty because they're twenty year, and they're twenty years, we could not fit into the forty-eight pages and tell a, a good story. And we don't get into, you know, too many granular details. We want it, we use anecdotes, so we do interview people and, and use nice pull quotes and, and things that makes, make the story rich. Uh, not just this happened on this date and, and, and what have you. And so the time to pull all of that together, the, the telling of that story is something that we don't believe we can do in sixty pages. We can probably do it in seventy-two. We'd prefer eighty-four. That's our recommendation. We actually go through page by page. We've looked through your history, uh, that's on your website. We've looked through the red book. We have done some amount of preliminary research. And that's our recommendation based on the basic research that we've done. What questions do you have?
Commissioner Davis?
I'm waiting to the end.
Oh, okay, uh, any questions? Yeah, like you did Miami Gardens and they're only twenty years old. And you need to do sixty pages. We're a hundred and twenty years old, so it's gonna be a challenge.
A little bit.
I don't want it to just be a history book, you know what I mean? But we can't avoid the history in Dania. And there's so much content that we have that it is gonna be hard to really pick out what we have. There's a couple of books that are written on Dania. You know, we could console the Historical Society. You know, we should probably create like a board for this or whatever. So, um, i- i- it's, there's a lot that needs to be incorporated into this and I, I thank you guys for undertaking this. It's good that you have experience. So you've done other cities as well, but it's not just Miami Gardens. That's just your most recent one, so.
I'll just address that. And we actually do a lot of work for Broward County. So because we do for the county, we've done all the cities in Broward County in some degree. Not necessarily entire history book, but we have done magazines and storytelling, which Kalib will now show, of course. Uh, but we've done a number of different things for this county because we're both residents and our business resides here. And we work specifically with Visit Lauderdale. I think an additional and important part of how we explain the difference between doing for Miami Gardens, which is just twenty years, and doing for Dania, which is now a hundred and twenty years, I do think it's important that I say even though the years are so much more, we can still fit it into a reasonable-sized book because it's about sort of topics like, you know, we make clear what is it that we are going to cover in pages, you know, one through six and pages seven through ten and so on. So we divide it up into topics, themes, that make it much easier for us to keep the number of pages small. But we've done this definit- definitively, as you can see, um, across Broward County. We've done all thirty-one municipalities in the county in some degree.
Awesome, awesome. That's, that's, that's great to hear. Um, so you guys are, you guys think we need eighty-four pages? Can we approve sixty pages, I think, last time?
Yes, sixty is what I believe you guys have on the table, but
Yeah.
our strong recommendation is eighty-four. We do believe that we could do it in seventy-two. Uh, sixty, if you decided is what we have to work with, we'll work with it, but it will be very challenging. Just again, we've sort of done a team review of what it would take and our recommendation, because we, we can only do, uh, every twelve pages. So based on how they put the seams of the book together, it's a twelve-page increment. So it could be sixty, seventy-two, eighty-four, ninety-six, and so on.
Okay, okay. Com- Commissioner James?
Thank you. With, um, with the budget, what was the budget for this book? Someone remind me?
Sixty grand is what we approved. Is, is a thousand dollars a page, basically. So
Okay.
sixty pages for sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so in essence, we probably need a hundred pages. I mean, that's, that's just what I see. I mean, I, I know firsthand someone's gonna feel like if we're doing this collectively, someone's gonna feel like something else needs to be added. This doesn't need to be left out and all those other things. So I, I want us, whatever number we come up with, to have it as a buffer so that it's a not-to-exceed, um, page amount or else we'll be here again and again and again. I'm gonna, and I want to prevent that from happening, so, um, that would be, that would be forty thousand more dollars that we would need, huh?
Yeah, I think if, it's either ninety-six or a hundred and eight, correct? This is about twelve.
And it doesn't, this doesn't co- you recommend eighty-four?
We're recommending eighty-four. We're, we're, we're confident at eighty-four.
Does this include the production of the book?
Everything, correct.
Okay, so everything soup to nuts?
It is soup to nuts.
Okay.
And that's, yeah. And that's something we did special for Dania. We've never done that before. We've just included everything. But instead of trying to break it out where you pay for A and then we come back and you pay for B, we just included everything. So again, that's actually the benefit of the bid, because we literally had to put it all into one.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, um, or do we have a, um, a funding source for the additional funds? That's, that's twenty-four thousand dollars.
Right now, um, it's important what you said, Commissioner James, because we have not discussed printing.
That's what I, that's what I was asking. I said soup to nuts. This is, this includes printing.
It would include printing, yes.
So it's, so wait, it's one thousand dollars per page?
Yes.
That includes printing?
Including one thousand copies of the print, specific number. If you guys wanted to somehow say, oh, now we want an extra thousand books, that would be different.
Okay.
But the first one thousand books is included at this price.
Okay, so one thousand books with, with the eighty-four pages, with the production and the printing and everything, soup to nuts, we would need a funding source for twenty-four thousand dollars if they are, I'm saying that that is what, from their professional opinion, what is recommended. So do we have a funding source?
We, um, we can either make a mid-year budget adjustment, um, to add the, the additional twenty-four thousand. But I believe that's a good recommendation that will include a thousand books because we have seen the quality of the work that these individuals do. I mean, and I've been able to speak to, to, to some of the employees that were in Miami Gardens when, when their document was printed and, and we've seen it because Commissioner Davis brought it. Well, so I think adding the twenty-four thousand, we could either take it out of your contingency or we can come and make a, a, a mid-year budget a- adjustment and take it out of, um, our unrestricted reserves.
What I, okay.
That's up to you.
I also wanted to know if it was an option. I know that we have, uh, positions that haven't been filled, positions that are no longer there. Um, I, I think it would be better as a mid-year adjustment, um, because we're gonna have revenues that are going back into the general funds that are not going to be used. I mean, even if you look at certain departments that still haven't filled certain vacancies, tho- tho- that's funding that we could use to fund the project. Um, I would prefer to use that before we use our contingencies just because we don't really refill it. But annually, but that would be, that's where I stand.
Um, if I may, Mayor, this is a big anniversary for us. I think being able to do a mid-year budget adjustment with some of the savings that we, we will realize, as we always do, would be my recommendation to you to take your sixty thousand budgeted plus a twenty-four thousand dollars mid-year budget adjustment to cover the rest. Yeah.
Commissioner Salvino, oh, you, let's.
I make a motion, we give the twenty-four thousand on mid-year budget and give them eighty-four pages and let's move on.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, Vice Mayor, you want to add?
I just want to ask a question. I, I, and I may, maybe I missed it, I don't know. Um, I know this is a paper book. I appreciate that and I understand the nostalgia and I understand the history about it and all of that. But is there also going to be a digital copy, copy available?
I'm sure.
We can provide that. We typically do the ADA remediation, so it's, it's ADA accessible as well.
Okay, so for people that can't see or, okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, on the table. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, eighty-four pages it is.
All right.
Uh, we look forward to working with you guys and I'm sure you'll begin to know us more and more. So, uh, yeah, congratulations and, uh, thank you for taking on this challenge.
I thank you. I, I will say one thing, just as a last comment. We still haven't sort of locked down who will be our primary contact to do the work with. Um, so far, obviously, we came in having met with Commissioner Davis. Uh, we also did meet with the, um, obviously, the City Manager. But I think it's going to be important that we do have a primary liaison, someone from the city who will be our contact. It doesn't have to be decided today, but we will need to really get running because the, the project does take a lot of research and time. So I'm just encouraging if we can get that in place at the soonest, it would be beneficial for the project.
Um, if I may, Mayor, Commissioner, um, our marketing director on the staff side will be the, 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 the lead person. We will also be, um, including a representative from, from each department. And, um, you know, how, however you want us to work with you all individually, collectively, you know, just, just guide us. Because we want to be, make sure that everything is included. And also, I think that it was discussed that we would also be working with a liaison from our Historic, um, Society as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I believe I did provide you with the list of different teams from each department. So Nanette would be the representative from the City Administration side. And then we would have Joanna from the Historical Soc- Historical Society. I, I know that Dania Point would be, have a primary with the present for, um, for, from that side. And, um, a couple of other additional point people that you would contact. But the main person from the city would be, uh, Nanette to, um, to get all the information that you would need out from the city. Obviously, I would still want all of us as the sponsor for this project to have the commission's input as well as far as the direction and having that information come back to us for approval. So if we could work together to do that with our city staff, then that would be acceptable.
We, we have actually spoken to Nanette and the Dania Point Emily and then, uh, Joanna from, from the Historical Society.
Okay.
Um, I think the, the point David is making is that it, it can become unwieldy if we have too many points of contact.
Right.
Um, we do want to start the process by speaking to as many stakeholders as possible. So we're getting all of the information at the very beginning for what needs to be in there. We would present that in some kind of brief, uh, you know, point basis to you for approval before we jump into the meat of the matter. But once we start, we're gonna, once we have all that information and it's approved, um, we're gonna jump into doing the production. We'll present you with something that looks close to finished. And then we'd prefer if one person is the person that is that liaison to say, you know, to redline and, and say yea, nee, or what have you. So is, would that be? That would be Nanette?
What person would, would be Nanette?
Nanette, okay, perfect.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Well, I do want to make sure that when, I, I just want to make sure that when it, before it goes to a certain point that we would be able, as the commission, to be able to come back and see before it goes.
Definitely. We're, we're gonna ask for your approval one hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, like once you guys get going and have some, you know, content to show us, then we could really sit down and go over it. Sounds perfect. But like you said, you gotta get the ball rolling.
Yes.
Three to six months, if you ask me, is kind of quick.
It's quick, but that's what, that's the time we have. To get it, to get it, we print overseas for the pricing, so to, to do that, um, that back and forth is gonna happen.
It is in November of next year, so to be able, at, at the November Dania After Dark, to be able to have, um, the, the big birthday party, to be able to have the, the city tent and, and have those one thousand copies.
Well, we could sell the copies too.
Yes.
Yeah, so get a little money back.
Yeah. Twenty dollars per book?
Yeah, what do you guys usually charge for like one book? What would you say like one book would be worth, like, you know, retail?
And the money could come back to whatever you want.
Forty, fifty bucks probably.
Depending, yeah. Something like this could go for forty.
Uh huh.
We have, we have one called Pieces of Jamaica that we do a hundred and twenty-five.
Wow.
This sells for a hundred and twenty-five.
One twenty-five, okay, see?
Essentially the same.
It's about eighty-four pages?
But this is more than eighty-four.
This is two hundred.
This is two hundred plus.
Okay.
But, but again, we have had others that, I think, I think this is other twenty-five.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Congratulations. Okay, item thirteen point two. This is a selection of constituent communication email platform. This is a City Manager slash Finance item. So, uh, Anna, you wanna?
Yes, um, I believe that this is something that we discussed at the last commission meeting. Um, Nanette, can, can, um, can you provide the, the details based on the guidance and the direction that we received from the City Commission?
Sure, you, uh, Nanette Rodriguez, Marketing and Communications Director for the, uh, city of Dania Beach. Ah, it's been a long night, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, good news. Uh, the, the question was whether we, we had a email-type service, a marketing service, which we do. We have a subscription with Constant Contact. Uh, the good news with Constant Contact, well, they, they have government rates. But we could also add sub-accounts so that up to five sub-accounts. So if you're each interested in having a sub-account, we can go ahead and procure that, uh, for, you know, for each of you. Or, you know, however it's done, um, it'll be a separate account. However, because we have a parent account, we can push down branded materials like templates and all of that information to the sub-accounts. But we are, but they will be separate even though they're part of the, the bigger body, so. So the question is, yes, we do have an email, um, type service and we use Constant Contact.
And you'll help us set it up if we need.
And we can absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's really easy to set up, so we just need to know who needs it. Content. Well, we will provide you a branded because it's with the city. Because you all are representatives of the city, it will be branded content that goes out. Yeah. So we, we just, yeah, we just need to know who needs one so that way we can meet with them and, and also coordinate with Maxine. It, we'll coordinate with Maxine on, on who needs it, okay?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll get one and we'll get with you on getting it going.
Perfect, yeah, easy.
Thank you. That's a, that's a, a good tool we could use, you know.
Absolutely.
I'm sure the more we use it, the more we'll get used to it. Okay, uh, next is we have appointments. Uh, there is a Planning and Zoning Board vacancy. Commissioner James, do you have, um, next meeting, okay? Next meeting, Commissioner James is gonna appoint, uh, her appointee to the Planning and Zoning Board. I have an appointment for the Dania Beach Housing Authority. Uh, we have a vacancy and, um, I'm gonna, um, renew, uh, And um I'm gonna um renew Ivy Cure. She she was on the housing authority and her term expired, so I'm renewing her term. Uh, and, oh. Okay, uh, I have a motion from Commissioner James, and I have a second from Commissioner Salino uh to approve Ivy Cure on the, on the housing authority.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. I mean, uh, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye? All right, sounds good. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Commissioner comments, and we're gonna start with Commissioner Davis. Uh, let me turn you on, okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I am going to save my comments for my new newsletter. Thank you so much.
All right. Wow. Be sure to check out the newsletter. All right, next to Commissioner Tamara James?
Yes, and and don't rush me, Commissioner Salino, because I have something that I need to discuss. Um, you see a piece of paper being passed down. I know that we approved as a commission, um, the key to the city for Dana Point. Um, with city staff and Maxine, we have done some research. And this is what I would like for us all to present to the city, to the city, yeah, it's like a little city. To Dana Point from the city. Um, there are two different options. Um, color and height to be determined. The key is, as you see, at forty-eight by sixteen. And that would be the face of the key. Um, I mean, Dana Point brings us in excess of taxes. Starting in twenty nineteen, two point two million dollars to now six point eight million dollars this year. And so I think that if anybody is deserving of a statement, it would be Dana Point. I wanted to get authorization, number one, to um, and on this, have a plaque on it that has, that lists our names. And that will be installed by Public Services or ECO. The base will be installed by our Public Services. And I am requesting, number one, authorization for this. And number two, the funds to pay for it out of our commission contingency, since it would be coming from all of us. Um, I think not to exceed five thousand dollars for installation and and everything from soup to nuts through Public Services and um through Advanced Multi-Sign and ECO.
Uh, Commissioner James, do we have a uh, or Dana Point, did they have a a location?
So the first thing was to get authorization from from um the commission first to go out and to speak to Dana Point about it. But I know this commission, I have to have, I have to have crossed every T and dotted every I about the questions that you would have. There isn't a a thing of this being um art in public places, because we cleared that up with the city attorney. Um, but after this, if we have authorization, I would work with uh Maxine and the city manager to go and speak with Emily and the Dana Point staff to um pick a location. I'm sure that they would love to have this
Yeah, I'm just saying if they agree.
No, only if they agree.
Yeah.
No, this is absolutely only if they agree, but I don't, Marco, don't rush me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Salino, motion?
If I make a motion, and she goes at least, and gets the permission, and then once she gets the permission, she can bring it back.
Commissioner, can you speak into your microphone?
Speak into the mic. Move your bag.
I said that, I said that I I I, my motion would be that she, you know, we accept her thing.
We approve it.
Approve it, go to Dana Point as long as they approve, then we come back, we can pick and approve the funding.
Okay, perfect. I like it.
Well, we need to pick the funding now, because I don't want to fight about it.
With the money that they, I mean, fi- up, you'd ask for up to five thousand dollars?
Yes, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
I would say not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, I have a motion. Second, second from Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Oh, which which design do you all like the best? No, option one or option two?
Remember, there's gonna be a plaque on it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be a plaque on it.
I like the square one.
Yeah, the square one's gonna be.
If we're gonna be a plaque, then the square is probably the best.
All right, option one.
Yeah. Option one, we have consensus?
Yes. Um, I don't think I, I I don't think that I saw everyone since Thanksgiving, as far as, we didn't have a meeting, right? No? All right. Um, I want to thank BSO Fire Police along with Parks and Recreation, city staff. Can you do a phenomenal job. Parks and Recreation, I think I said that already, um, for um our annual Thanksgiving drive. It was a great event, well-organized, no issues. Um, we gave out everything that we had packed, looking to make it bigger and better. Um, and so thank you for that. Um, and then lastly, uh, the the MLK organization is having um financial difficulties. I'm trying to keep up with the cost of inflation with everything. Um, a a float has gone from nine thousand, I mean, nine hundred dollars to three thousand dollars just in the case of what we are used to dealing with, just with different aspects of things. And so I'm asking to make um a contribution from my personal contingency of five thousand dollars to make sure that we can secure everything that we need to secure for the three events. Remember, um, the city funds, the organization, twenty-two, I believe, thousand dollars to be able to have three different events, a prayer breakfast, a banquet, um, a parade, and a peace in the park. And so that's a very, very tight budget, considering we're in twenty twenty-three. Do I have consensus for that?
We have consensus, uh, five thousand dollars for Commissioner James for MLK Foundation. Okay.
That's not mine.
Consensus? Okay, well, we have three, yeah, okay. We have consensus for approval.
All right. Happy holidays. Be safe. Happy New Year. See you on the other side.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salino?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and all the good stuff involved. Be safe, be healthy, and have a good time. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Happy holidays to you. Vice Vice Mayor?
Can be very quick. Um, first of all, the tree lighting ceremony. Um, I have heard from several people that night that our tree lighting ceremony rivaled uh Christmas on La Solis. So I thought that was very impressive, that it was that good, and I would agree with them, because I was there for Christmas on La Solis. Um, the other thing is, uh, the teens were here tonight um for their, the the teen program. Um, I don't know if they're, if, well, I was gonna, I was actually gonna talk about the winter camp because the winter camp's also starting, and it's a two-week camp, and it's very inexpensive. Um, and like I always do for the summer camp, I wanted to cover some um students, um, some kids in each of the camps. I think there's three, and there's openings in all three. So I was gonna ask if I could cover three from each park with my contingency. I think it's like two hundred dollars per kid or something. So, yes, all good? They're all good? Okay. And then if the teen program um it needs money, I just don't know if they do or not for for trips or anything. And that one, I did not hear anything about.
That, the, the teen program and the boy state, whenever you can invest on teenagers, the return on the investment.
No, I agree, and that's what I'm saying, because I know the last time, I I, look, I, it it was a really good experience for me the last time when I went over there and I spent some time with the kids. When they came back, um, they were all very excited. They were really they were engaged, um, which you don't usually get from teenagers. So they were very engaged, and they really seemed to enjoy themselves. They made friends. They wanted to continue with parks. They wanted to continue with the city, doing things with the city. And so it's like, if there's a way that we can, that I can help continue that, whether it's, you know, throw a little extra towards them, I'll do it. So that's why I wanted to.
For a lot of those teens, that time that they spent with us was their, the highlight of not just their summer, but their entire year.
I just don't know how much they need, if any.
We'll, we'll get back to you. I'll, I'll meet with with Cassie and we'll go over that.
But would everybody approve that, if I wanted to put a little bit of my contingency towards that?
Yes, we have approvals.
Okay. Perfect. Hey, what, I know, of course, he's Santa. That's what he does.
This is a good time for Commissioner Salino to approve what you need.
Oh, okay. So anyway, that's true. All right. And with that, happy holidays, everybody. Have a wonderful Christmas, New Years, a lot of other good stuff.
Okay, um, uh, the Committee One Hundred is having a, their big annual dinner at Tropical Acres, and they have a little program. Uh, it's two hundred fifty dollars to have a little sponsorship in it. So I think the city, I'll take it out of my contingency funds, just to have a little city sponsorship, you know, uh, in their program. It's two hundred fifty bucks. All right, I have approval for that. Awesome. And look, we got a lot done this year, guys. And yeah, I'm really, you know, I'm privileged to be sitting up here with you guys. You're a great team. It's been a, it's been a wonderful year as Mayor of Dana. Uh, we've, the relationships that we've made, rekindled, new ones that we've created. It's it's been, it's been incredible. It's been fulfilling. And I'm really excited to tackle twenty twenty-four head-on. Uh, just today, what we did in the consent agenda is, we got a lot accomplished today.
Taxpayers.
Yeah, this was a thick, thick agenda, and we really accomplished everything. And, you know, thank you for working with me. Thanks to our staff. Thank you, Maxine. And uh, thank, thank you to our our first responders. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa. Everybody, enjoy your family, enjoy your friends. Have a safe and happy holidays. Go, go, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just wanted to throw out something. Um, we've, we, our city manager was out of town for about three weeks. Our chief was out for a week. We, a few other, I think there were some others. All your, your seconds did a great job. I'm just saying, in your absence, just so you know. So that says something about leadership as well. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Anyway, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. We have a deep bench in Dania.
Deep bench.
And uh, very talented individuals that work here. People are, people are banging down the door to work here, from what I see and understand. So with that, happy holidays. Be sure to enjoy what Dania has to provide and offer you during this holiday season. Meeting adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You guys, you have something from me on your thing. I just, I didn't have time to shop, but I'm shopping this weekend. I couldn't bring much from Australia news either, such restriction. Mayor, what have devastated you last last night?
I know.
I mean, come on, man.
I know. Around this time last night, I was, I was not happy.
I couldn't sleep last night. I was still reading the BS.
I, I slept.
Good night, everyone. Merry Christmas.
I didn't say aye yet.
Happy New Year.
How you doing?
I'm good, probably, good.
Happy Hanukkah.
Um, yeah, it was, you know, it was a really funny game.